On page 216 in your budget book. And we're starting with Rhodes. So I guess Mr. Schneider, is Mr. Schneider here?
Are we doing roll call?
I'm sorry, thank you very much. All councilors present except for O'Bree. Sorry about that, Ms. Molding.
Communications.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider, I skipped item three on the agenda.
Okay.
Calendar and communications, is there any communications from any of the councilors?
Personnel committee had an interview today with Patrick Flaherty for the Harbor Management Commission, so we all approved him or we'll be recommending him for the next council meeting for a vote.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any communications?
Just an email from Board Leader about the school, the different facilities for sports.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Just to mention that we have a request to speak on the new internet update of the towns' internet website. It's not currently in this year's budget, it's programmed for next year. It had been requested for this year, so it'd be up to the council. You can entertain that if you want, if there's someone here in Jerry Lockman Park to speak on that, if you're interested.
So a member of town staff?
Yes, he's on the IT Steering Committee.
Okay, so when we get down to technology, then council can decide what their preferences as far as that item goes and whether we want to entertain it or not. So now, Mr. Schneider.
Okay, the first project here is for Rhodes, which is the replacement or was probably construction of the Groton Long Point Bridge on the toll. This project's been around for a while, I think 2015, 2016.
All right, there we go. There was a study completed, the council and the RTM had appropriated funds to complete a study of the bridge. The bridge is rated, the bridge is being inspected by the state of Connecticut, it is rated poor. There's a couple ratings underneath that before we close the bridge. This is the only bridge in the Groton Long Point, it's the only one that will carry any traffic. There is a crossing on a trail over Amtrak which goes through Monford Cove for emergencies that we could use at, but if this bridge fails, we do have an issue. So in 2013, we presented to the council, staff presented to the council, a plan, several plans, several options, and that was then supposed to be moving on to the final design. What we're asking for this year is to complete the preliminary engineering for the project and to prepare for a bond referendum. We're looking at a 3.5 to maybe 4.5 million dollar bridge replacement. The only thing coming to the council right now is, I think the only one on the council at the time was Rich, Councilor Morasek. So we need to really go back and educate and the new council of what the options were. Second problem I have is that we're going to have to stake, not a couple steps where we're not starting from where we left off, we have to take steps backwards because in 2013, we did hire the engineering firm. Two of the people have retired from that firm, and so we'll have to go back to the firm, enter into new contracts, and they'll actually have to dig through their files, and they do have them, all the information we have, which is the as-built drawings of the existing bridge, all the studies that were done, and then move it forward. The bridge needs to be replaced. There's going to be a point in time where the state is going to inspect it and find structural items that are, have gotten worse, and it could lead to a load limit be placed on the bridge, then that's the issues of getting, moving vans, delivery trucks, and all those types of heavy vehicles over the bridge. To build this bridge itself, once it would be designed and put out to bed, it is about a two-year project. It would be built in halves, just like other bridges you've seen in the area. One half would be done, it'd be one-way alternating traffic. The work would be done in the fall, winter, and spring, leaving the summer season open to that type of traffic. There are no other alternatives, this bridge needs to be replaced. So what the funding is for is to continue on, take the options, bring back to this council the options, have them weigh in on which one they would like the, which way they would like the Public Works Department to move on with our engineering firm, and then start that preliminary design so we have good cost estimates. Come back to the council, and then it'll be up to the council to determine whether they want to bond it or fund it out of taxes. But we're looking at 3.5 to 4.5 million dollars for that replacement.
Other questions for Mr. Schneider? Councilor Ross.
Yeah, Gary, I looked at the, I looked at that bridge, and I know that the beams on that bridge are oversized, and they're on a concrete abutment, and I know that the facade on the outside of the concrete abutment looks poor, and the roadway on the bridge is not in the best shape. Now, I don't, I don't know much about the roadway because it's, of course you can't see it, other than underneath and looking at those steel structures, you know, certainly they're not going to fail. Did we have core borings on that bridge?
I do believe, since it was 2013, I do believe they did a couple cores. I know they did a couple borings through the causeway, so I would assume they would have done that, but the DOT has a full inspection report that I can, I can put online for people to see or give you a copy of. But they looked at everything from spalding to effervescence of the salt leaching through the concrete. We're looking at getting a little bit more headroom underneath the bridge, that's not probably a proper term. We're going to keep the alignment roughly the same, the same elevation, but with stronger beams, shallower beams, we can get a little bit more space underneath it during high tide. We're not making the opening any wider, because that would just be a permitting, years' worth of permitting to take a look at that. The causeway will be armored on both sides so water can come up during the storms, water will go up over the roadway, and then come back out again. Because if we raise it too much, then we're burying all those properties that are in Groton Long Point and Noank on that side, we'd have major issues of trying to get into those properties' driveways. So we've done all the studies and we've gotten that basic portion down, now it's time to get the bridge replaced with something. Several of the options included a fishing platform, that was one of the options, it included a walkway or bikeway along that thing, because there's a lot of foot traffic there. So those were all the options I need to bring back to the council to get their guidance on which, you know, way they would like to proceed. By building a temporary pedestrian crossing while we're doing the other bridge work, we leave it there, then now we have that fishing platform. So those are the options that the previous council had looked at, but I need to bring back. But to bring it back to the council, we need to have, to have the engineering firm come in and prepare the final design. So it's something, we can kick the can down the road, it'll be inspected this summer by the state, and we'll get the report.
You know, Gary, I was always against the way they engineered that bridge and the way the engineering company was going on to that bridge. My feeling was that they could open up the causeway back to the 1938 opening, which is what I think DEP would have liked to have seen, and build not a, a bridge similar, not a bridge where it is, but a bridge on the outside edge with pilings, going from one piling to another with the steel structure. And that would allow the causeway to be completely opened up, and I think that should be considered. I spoke to those engineers about it, but unfortunately, you know, they got the direction to do what they did. By putting a, by putting the piers in or the pilings, that would allow that construction to go on while the existing bridge is intact without touching it. And I think that ought, that should have been considered, but it wasn't.
What we did look at, and the study did show, and doing this from memory, so it's a little bit dangerous, was we did take a look at that and just the permitting issues with the, with deep, with DEP, because right now the coves are stable. They've, they, they're stable, opening that up then would be more flushing back and forth, so now we're going to have to study the habitat. And then some of the issues from deep was, well, okay, that isn't bad, but you go 600, 700, 800 feet up the cove and you have Amtrak that has a very small opening there, so if you're improving that whole estuary, only a portion of it. But that was, that was looked at, one is to take the causeway out, put the whole thing on pilings, take it back to the 38. So that'd be some of the issues that the engineer would be looking at. We'd need to bring it back that far, what we found, and then bring it back to the council and have them weigh in to which, which way that, you know, we should go forward on the preliminary design. There was federal bridge grants for this, there were some local bridge grants for this, we don't know where they're at. We don't know if they're available, but we need to hire somebody first to, not start from scratch, but we're taking a couple steps backwards to go forwards.
I was curious, if you look on 217 where it says, "In order for the department to prepare for a bond referendum, additional work must be completed," and then you have a few bullet points there, including the question about the sidewalk, the undergrounding of utilities, and the grants. I was just wondering, what kind of timeframe are we talking here? How soon do you have to have those decisions? Is it just a matter of as quickly as possible?
That would be nice, because if we would, if, if the money's appropriate, July 1st, we would have to go to the engineering firm, so it'd take us two to three months to negotiate a contract and get their team working. Then you do the design work, so it's coming to the council, back to the council January or February. Again, we don't need another appropriation on which way to go forward. It's a year's worth of design and permitting, so we're looking two to three years out, the whole process, at the fastest, before we could even start the construction. And then trying to make it into the bonding cycle, which we usually try to like to have a November bond referendum date tied into the election, so. All in all, probably looking at close to five years out to get the whole thing completed, and then two years' worth of construction, five to six years out.
Thank you. Councilors Perry.
We see we've got $300,000 estimated for engineering.
Correct.
Have we done requests for proposal for the engineering firms, or?
Yes, yes we have, that was in 2011, that we actually had, several firms had proposed on it, and we select, and we selected URS, which is now AECON. They sold themselves, AECON.
I see.
So we did, we, since we'd like to go back to that firm, we would negotiate a new contract because they have all the data, they have all the material, it's, you know, they have some history, they have the CAD drawings, they have all of that stuff, they follow the old as-bills. Going with a new firm, we have that information, but a new engineering firm is not, is not, they'll want to do their own investigation to determine if the facts are correct.
Did they say at that time they would do this work for $300,000, or how do we estimate?
Yes, they did, for the preliminary engineering, and that'll bring it up.
Since it's been eight years, it's likely, or seven years likely, they'll go up from that?
It could be, we could vary the scope, we could pull back the scope a little bit, so that it could fit into that budget, because some of the work was done already. So we would limit the scope, we would negotiate with them with this as an upset limit.
Thank you.
Councilor Franco.
So if the state comes in this summer and says the bridge has been safe, they'll close it right away?
Probably the first thing that would happen is, we had posted for load limit, I would think it's not critical, but if they would close it, if it was an immediate danger of falling down, we would close it. What we would have to do is, there are temporary bridges out there that you could get, and it's been done, there are panel bridge that would be put in there. We would have to, contract with a firm quickly to put a temporary structure over the top of that. It could be done, but you could be weeks before something like that would come in. So if something catastrophic happened like that, we could get the residents out over that walkway, which is on Amtrak through Monford Cove, down to the bike path in the back of the wastewater treatment plant. So there's a way of getting emergency, getting small pickup trucks in and out, gators in and out, so if there was that type of issue, we could run a bus system to and from that path to get people out, but it's going to be a big inconvenience, it'll be weeks before we get a bridge in there, if it totally failed. If it was a load limit issue on it, we'd be taking a look at coming back to the council to fund a temporary bridge structure or that would be placed over the top.
So even if it totally failed, it's still a five-year-out process?
Permitting, and we need to get money, the bonding.
Okay, thanks. I just, following up on what Councilor Franco just said, as far as fire trucks getting in and out of there, if they, if they reduce the load limit, would you still be able to get fire trucks in and out?
It all depends the type of vehicle they have. I, that I don't know, we would have to work with the whole thing, if it's, if it's a tanker, which I don't think it has to be, it could be one of their small rescue vehicles. One thing would be, is you get, you get it over once and you pre-position it on the other side, I've seen other communities do that, they have fire apparatus on both sides of a place, and just the personnel move back and forth.
Rich, Japanese.
Well, I don't think you'd have a catastrophe of a failure because of those beams underneath, being placed on those concrete piers. Like I said before, the outside edge of that concrete doesn't look good, but it's solid underneath. Should there be a failure with the, with the base of the load, of the roadway, steel plates, put two-inch, one-inch steel plates on that, it's done all the time, that would, that would be as a temporary measure to, should there be a major problem.
Councilor Haidt.
If, are you able to come back with different options, like, here's the planning for this kind of a bridge, and then if you were to do the other one that Councilor Morasek is talking about, and here's the wider bridge with the causeway things on it, is that a possibility, or is it, we're voting for one bridge and that's it?
No, you're voting to hire the engineering firm that we should have hired about four years ago to bring back the preliminary plans to the council back then who knew it. So right now I'm hiring the engineering firm to come back to review with the council all of their past due diligence that they have done, all the issues, I do believe, and to add the issues that can we take the causeway out, put a peer-supported bridge deck in, whether, how much cost that is, what it involves, so all those options. So we are taking steps backwards. I myself, I'm not a PE, but I wouldn't have, I would not have the town engineer sign off on anything that the state inspects and is fined, you know, and is found to be wrong. To me, we bring a bridge engineer in who's, whose entire job is to do bridge construction, bridge engineering.
Councilor Atwater.
Councilor Haidt asked my first question, so that's taken care of. My second question here is, the report came back to the council in 2013, and then down below it's talking about a November 2020 bonding referendum. I mean, that's seven years, so if we start now, aren't we still talking seven years instead of four or five?
No, because the council several years failed to, they kicked this can down the road. It was a funding issue for several years in the capital improvement programs, and this, since the bridge still remained at poor rating, we could do this next year, we could do this next year. So it's not that period of time, there, in 2014 or 15, there should have been funds available to carry it through preliminary engineering, so we could set up the bond referendum, we could set, have the cost, we could have applied for the grants, and we could have done all that stuff, so it stopped. So right now this is money to pick it up from where it should have been in 2014.
I understand, but what I'm asking is that if, if the report came back in 2013, and the report was saying that they would do a bonding in November of 2020, that's seven years.
Yeah, okay, now I understand, question.
So would it mean seven years from now if we, if we move forward?
No, because in 2013 or 14, we were looking at two years out for doing a bond referendum, so it's in the same time period as this, so everything got moved out. So it wasn't a bond referendum in 2020, back in 2013, it was a bond referendum probably in 2015, we're looking forward to, so we had to design in 2013, get the preliminary engineering going out to bond referendum the next year, 2015. So that 2020 is based on if we get funding, and that's an aggressive schedule, but that's getting funding in FYE 19, trying to go for a 20 referendum, but that's, that's an aggressive schedule.
Councilor Haidt.
If the bridge has been rated poor since 2013, because previous councils have kicked the can down the road, what's to say that we wouldn't be okay kicking the can down the road? Like, is there deterioration in the bridge, or is it basically stable?
We will find out more when the state inspection comes through. It is my job to bring these issues up to the council, this is a long range, this is not, you know, go out and patch a pothole, this is not go out and put, you know, a piece of pipe in the road. This is engineering permitting, it is extensive on this, on this thing, we may have to get temporary grading easements, I don't think we have to purchase any property along the causeway. So this is a long process, this would move it along in a, in a nice progression where we don't have to react, we can think about it and move forward.
Councilor Parker, and then Franco.
I think everyone touched on this, and I believe you did too, so we're spending $300,000, but they already started a preliminary report in 2013, and those two people have left the firm.
Right.
Didn't they have many working on it, or how many people were working on it at the time?
Don't know, with the, our project, project manager from the firm, he has retired, and one of the other engineers I do believe has retired. But you're right, there are other people on the firm, so they have the files and that there. This is the, move it forward, that's why I recommend going with the same firm, not starting from scratch.
Okay, but does it mean it will be 300,000?
Yes.
That's what they quoted?
Right.
That was a quote from 2013 though, is that correct?
It's, it's the estimate from 2013, what that will buy us is the preliminary plans that are detailed enough with future, with the current pricing now for, for the commodities, with looking at what grants are out there for us, and then moving that forward and projecting two, three, or four years out when the construction starts, about what the bond referendum should be. And of course, then we add our soft costs on, if the council wants to go to bond referendum, then we add our soft costs in. And if there's, and if they say they can do the money for $150,000 and just divide this in half, then we only spend 150, the other funds stay there, and I'm not authorized to spend them on anything else. So they sit there, they get swept up by the finance director, the next three weeks, I will be providing her with a list of projects that are completed, because what I'm told by her, I, to what she says, and, and we'll do that, so we sweep those projects forward, we sweep those projects, those things go there. If it's a roof for Fitch High School, it's a, if there's a roof for Town Hall, it's only used on a roof for Town Hall, it's not a roof, it's not used for a roof at Town Hall Annex. So those projects are very specific, funds are, are left, are expended, they get swept back.
Councilor Franco, and then O'Bree.
So it says that the last inspection rated it as poor, when was the last inspection done?
Two years, it was 2016.
2016.
They're done every two years.
Every two years, and has been prior to this?
Every, every two years.
Going back how far?
At least five, six cycles. It really, the states really started inspecting the bridges when the state had the issues with the state inspectors not inspecting the bridges, so they went into an inspection program. I could find that out for you, but it's been at least 10, 15 years that the state's been inspecting bridges over 20 feet.
And since they began on this bridge, it's been poor ever since?
It's, it's been downgraded once, it was, I want to get the title, it went from fair down to poor. The thing is, excellent, very good, good, satisfactory, fair, poor, so I know it went from fair to poor.
Is there anything below poor?
Serious, which the rehabilitation repair required immediately, critical, advanced deterioration, it may be necessary to close the bridge, immediate failure, corrective action, may put it in back into light service, bridge is closed to traffic, and failed, of course, is out of service. But the state inspectors come down, they do a visual, they take, and they provide a report on all of our bridges over 20 feet, and luckily, a ton of Groton doesn't have many. Big expense.
Councilor O'Bree.
Don't we in fact have three bridges that are, that are problem situations, don't we have one that's closed, one that's down, and one that's perhaps failing?
Correct, those are three of our own bridges, they're, they're really culverts, the road, they have culvert sections, but they're still called bridges. One is on Quaker Farm Road, the other one is North Stonington Road, and then there's one on River Road by Binless. So those are our local bridge, local bridges, issues we have. We also have the Moser Avenue Bridge, which is a Noank, but that's an orphaned bridge, that's the state project, they will be, if funding's available, they will be replacing that bridge, that's their project under their money, their, they hired their own engineering firm to do that, so we have that one. We own the Meridian Street Bridge, which we replaced when we, when we reconstructed Meridian Street, Mike, that was about good 20 years ago, so that bridge is ours.
Wouldn't you think that perhaps we need to evaluate all three and decide which is the better one that we should be working on right now?
Of those three little ones, absolutely, that's what funding, this one here is critical. If this bridge fails, or if there's a low limit on it, we cut off Groton Long Point from the rest of the town. Whereas those other ones, there are ways around them. On North Stonington Road, you can go around by the general store. On Quaker Farm Road, it's been closed, I heard one complaint from a person that uses it as a shortcut, getting, I do believe to a neighbor's house, and he was in a motorized wheelchair, so he had a concern there, that was the only thing I heard on that bridge. And Binless is, we did put plates over it, those plates are, because it's a light, it's a light road, and just the tops of the culverts are, have been deteriorating. But out of those three local ones, we need to do that, I need to do that for the council and prioritize them. I think the one is that everyone has heard about is the North Stonington Road Bridge, which is the Old Mystic Fire District, it really wants replaced. Of course, we had local bridge funding, and that went away with the state's funding.
I was, I could be wrong, I was under the impression that Stonington had done something that had made it so the money was going to be held for a while.
Stonington had, had approved in their own budgets, their half of the remaining funds that wasn't funded with the local bridge funds. Towne of Groton did not fund it.
No, I realize that.
Right, and then the state with the transportation issues and their funding along, all the transportation projects, that was one of the projects that was put on hold, the local bridge portion, which the state funds. So even if the Towne of Groton would fund one half of what, fund the same amount of what Stonington funded, we'd still be short money by about 50 percent, so we still couldn't do the bridge, we'd have to go back for funding from both Stonington and Groton to go it alone, and that's about 1.4 million dollars, I believe, for that little bridge.
Can I ask one more question? The other night when the representatives were here from Groton Long Point, and Rick, they left me with the impression that they really didn't want anything done with the bridge right now, is I wrong about that?
I don't think they, that issue came up, but.
No, we talked about the bridge.
I missed it tonight. Well, they, you know, I really think that, you know, that putting in the pilings and building a bridge that way is a better way to go. But we've gone down the road with the, the existing designer, and we haven't committed ourselves, other than, you know, with the, with the design, I don't know how much money we, we paid them so far, but I would like to see us step back and take another look at this, to see if that causeway, the pilings could be better. Because there's a contractor down in Cliff, in Madison, who built the bridge for me in Groton Long Point, and he put in those pilings, and I know, I know he could do this, and he could do it for much less than $3 million, but, you know.
I just think because this is the only means of egress for the people that live out there, I think this is something we need to do, we should approve this money, and then whatever bridge style that is decided upon is fine, but I really do think we should approve this, it would be irresponsible not to at this point, with it continuing to deteriorate. Is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to say that I would like to see the information, have you come to the council and review the bridges so that we can make a veteran-form decision on the others?
Okay, absolutely.
Councilor Perry.
I'd just like to second the mayor's comments, the fact that this is a vital bridge, and it's the only in-way inlet and out egress for Groton Long Point, and to get emergency vehicles in and out of Groton Long Point, I think we can't bury our heads in the sand about this, and I think we have to move ahead with it. So I think we should vote to approve this $300,000 appropriation.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on CIP 1C, Groton Long Point Bridge Construction. Did we have a motion on this?
We don't.
We don't have a motion, we need a motion.
Oh.
For how much?
300,000.
Moved by Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Zeperry for $300,000. Yes.
I'd like to make a, a motion for $150,000, this way we can start it and see, see how it goes.
it goes and have the, and have Gary make a presentation in the meantime.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moravsek seconded by Overy. So we have two figures on the floor. The first amended is what we would be voting, 150,000. Mr. Schneider, is that enough to start the engineering? Or is that going to hand tie your hands?
It will take us, from what I feel, it will take us back. It will answer some of the council's questions that I hear here, whether a pile-supported bridge being built, what the, what the impacts are, what the funding levels are out there, going back over the options, with some cost estimating being done and with some design work, not as much as we would have to get it ready for bond referendum. So we would work to that number.
And then the, the question becomes, if it's not enough and you come back to us and you need more money, then we're stuck taking it from contingency?
I don't know if you take that. We might have to look further in.
Fourth quarter transfer?
Increasing contingency from fund balance.
Yeah, I just think we should stick with the full amount. Counselor Parker.
But if they already have preliminary plans already, we're just moving forward from the 2013, they're just going to re-review it and update to the current pricing of this year. Is that correct?
They, that's right. We, we have a schematics. We know what it looks like. The council gave us direction to install a, a 30-foot wide, I do believe, or 36-foot wide roadway with a concrete sidewalk, leaving the temporary pedestrian bridge there during the construction project as a fishing platform, bringing it from the intersection roughly of Esquire Point Beach Parking Lot to East Shore Avenue. That's what they gave us. So, so that is the thing. Now, there's several other options of going smaller, wider, and everything else. So $150,000, I can come back to the town council with the different options. If there's any other environmental issues that we have out there, it's seven, it's going to be five or, it's going to be six, seven years later, and present to the council the different options with, I'm going to call them gross cost estimates. It's, it's not going to be based on fairly detail. From that, if the council would give us the, the okay to go forward, there's going to have to be more money for the preliminary design work to bring it to the, bring it to a point where we can then go to a bond ref, then estimate the cost for a bond referendum.
Director Landry, would you be able to look up what we did in 2013, how much we paid for the preliminary? Just to get that information out to us. I think a little background from what happened before to know what's going on now.
It, it could be URS. They've changed, they've bought and sold some.
Oh, URS, sounds more familiar. Okay. The amount that was spent in 2013 to prepare that study.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion on the first amended figure? I'll be opposing it because I think we should just give the full amount so that we don't slow the process any further. Counselor Franco.
Can I just ask why this has been pushed down over and over again?
Bridge hasn't failed. It's still fair, fair condition, tight budget years, big dollars. It's not a small project. It was just one of those items where you're looking at a whole list of things to do and the town manager at the time made that decision. You know, if nothing has changed, you know, let's look at it next year.
Counselor Atwater.
I'd just like something clarified. I guess we knew here. These monies that, on this list of the capital reserve fund, are those monies that are in the capital reserve?
Do you want to, do you want to explain how it works?
In terms of these amounts on the total list?
Right. I guess the reason I'm asking, John, is if we, if we fund 150 and then need more, wouldn't the other 150 still be in the capital reserve and not have to?
These funds aren't in the, well, we're going to take what, 500,000 out of current capital funds, but the rest would be new dollars coming in. So the money would not be there unless we swept some of the other projects and there happened to be money left over. So it's not automatically in there.
But it's not automatically out of there either?
Right. We wouldn't know at this point.
You could, you contribute. We're going to, once you do these, then we put money from the general fund into the capital reserve fund.
I understand, but there must be some money in the capital reserve fund from years past. And I'm wondering what that number is or where do we get that number?
I think there's about, there's about a million, but we don't want to go past 500,000 of fund balance for this next year. We always want to have a cushion just in case projects, things happen with them.
Any other discussion on the first amended? Yes.
I'm just going to say, for the capital reserve fund, the mayor's correct. Usually we fund the amount of the projects that have been approved. And that's the pattern we've gotten into over many, many years now. And that's why the fund balance in that fund is so little. We tried a couple of years ago to put some additional money over and above the amount of the projects for each year to try to build up that fund balance. It's kind of along the same lines as the general fund because we've continually only funded the projects that were approved. And we've had at least three projects that we have used, have come for additional, to take out of fund balance from this project, from the capital reserve fund, just this fiscal year alone. So there is money in there, but the fund balance is very low.
Thank you, Cindy.
Is there any other discussion? All right. So we will vote on the first amended figure of 150,000 for CIP 1C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you raise your hands, please? Atwater, Overy, Heed, are you raising?
No, I'm, I'm scratching.
Moravsek, opposed. One, two, three. Okay, hold on. Zeperry, Schmidt, Granatowski, abstentions?
I was opposed.
Oh, you're opposed?
Excuse me.
Abstentions? Parker. All right, let me repeat that. So in favor are Atwater, Overy, Heed, Moravsek, opposed. Zeperry, Schmidt, Granatowski, Franco, one abstention. So four, four, and one. So that fails. So now we are back to the main motion, which is 300,000 for 1C. Is there any further discussion on this number? Seeing none, we'll vote on $300,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Keep your hands up, please. Atwater, Overy, Parker, Moravsek, abstentions? So that passes. Five in favor, four opposed, zero abstentions. Did you get the names? Okay. All right, thank you. We are on to CIP 3C, Mystic Streetscape Phase Two on page 218. We need a motion, please.
Make a motion for 12,000 for Mystic Streetscape Phase Two.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Heed for $12,000.
Streetscape's Phase Two was really the Water Street as portion of the downtown Mystic sidewalk project that was done. The state did its final audit and there were several items that were not reimbursable or they wouldn't reimburse us for, leaving the project with a cash deficit. So to balance the books, the finance director asked me to put this into a CIP project because she can explain this better than I can the reason why, other than it wasn't, it wasn't reimbursed by the state.
Right. It wasn't, this was a long project and we had a lot of costs that were not reimbursed by the state. And we caught, we were in a lot of contact, constant contact with the state. And they reached a point, they couldn't really explain why they were not going to reimburse them. And we had expected that once the final audit was done, that some of them that were deemed ineligible would be reversed and we would receive some funding. And we did not receive the funding. So this project is running about a $12,000 cash deficit that for expenditures already incurred, the money's been spent. We need to cover that deficit to close out the project. And there were some expenditures for Streetscapes that did flow through the capital reserve fund at one point. So I thought it was a logical cost because they were a capital improvement project. So I thought this would be a logical spot for the funding to be.
Counselor Parker?
So would this be from the money that is already in the account that you guys just mentioned? The million from the capital? You guys have a reserve, you have money?
Well, we have a million dollars. We're only planning to use 500,000 of that for this year. The balance would be a contribution from the general fund into the capital reserve fund. And that's something that we'll vote on. It's a different account. So whether you say the 12,000 is coming from the 500,000 we're using or it's coming through one of our, we don't really designate that fund balance applied to individual projects.
Moravsek and then Zeperry.
Gary, is this what, what was once called Phase Three?
No, this is Phase Two. That was the Water Street portion. Phase One was really Main Street, a little bit of the intersection. This brought it down to almost the Daniel Packard Inn. So sidewalks, it was utility relocations, some resurfacing. So Phase Three was, and the funds are kind of in limbo right now. Phase, there was a Mystic Phase Three, there still is according to the state, although they haven't released the funds. If there was any monies left over from Phase One and Phase Two that could be applied to either Stonington side or the Towne of Groton side of Mystic. So we're still looking at trying to capture those dollars if we can define, get the state to define what is available and what they mean by downtown Mystic. Couple of the options could be extending sidewalks up High Street, maybe some other, we looked at that, some other, continuing to sidewalk down Water Street a little bit more to the Daniel Packard Inn. There's a section missing. So, but what we have not received from the state is any type of word from them in the last six months that there are funds available. These are federal funds available that can be used in the downtown Mystic area again. So.
Will this affect Phase Three?
No. I suppose if we don't pay Phase, no, no. And because we paid out, that project's closed with the state, there, that, that's, so this one affected. This just affects our own books.
Counselors Zeperry.
I have a few questions. Were there sidewalks completed? Was this phase completed?
Yes, it was.
How much money has been expended so far?
I don't have that number. We'd have, we'd have to.
I'm sorry. This has been around, for several years, we've been carrying this deficit because we had expected that the state would ultimately reimburse us for some of those ineligible costs.
And how many feet of walks of sidewalk were installed?
All I can tell you is the sections was roughly from the intersection of Main Street, which is Route One, all the way to approximately the triangle where we welcomed the Mystic sign is by Daniel Packard Inn, both sides of the street. Is that a half mile, three quarters of a mile on each side? But it was also some utility relocations. Of course, there was drainage involved and curving.
So we've, actually, we've already expended this money. We just haven't appropriated.
Correct. That thing that, I'm going to make sure.
The Streetscapes projects, Phase One and Phase Two were state grants. We had set up special revenue funds for those. And it's only in the capital reserve because we have this $12,000 of a cash deficit that technically the general fund is funding that. So this is to, to transfer, make a payment into that Streetscapes fund to zero out that cash deficit and we can close the project.
Let's do it.
Any other questions? Counselor Atwater.
My only question, Cindy, is that it says in the appropriations, the capital reserve has to be greater than 25,000. I realize it's a capital project, but I don't know if, are we in violation of that?
No, I don't believe we are because the project as a whole far exceeded that. And I can get you the information of the total project if you'd like, the cost for Streetscapes.
We're going to vote tonight, but it'd be interesting.
It was a lot of money.
Anyone else? If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on CIP 3C, Mystic Streetscape Phase Two, the amount of $12,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So moved unanimously. On to CIP 4H, Spicer Park Dock on page 219.
Mayor, Mark Barry is at another meeting in Noank. He will be here a little later on. He did give me a crib sheet, but I would recommend that only in the dire straits that I try to explain his projects. So if you could hold off on those until later on tonight, I will be here. I have it. He plans to be here. He's with Noank zoning right now.
So there are two CIPs for Parks and Rec. Do you want to hold off and wait for Director Barry? Any objection to holding up and waiting for Director Barry? Mr. Locken is here, I believe? No, he's not here either. I think he, did he leave?
Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry. Shall we wait for Mr. Barry? Yes, people are saying yes. Okay. So then we're going to skip down to 5A Education Services on page 222. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Counselor Moravsek, can we just start on that end with the, with moving the figures again, please?
For the Water Services on the.
Yes, please. Page 222, 5A.
Yeah, this is the Water Services.
Yes, please.
I make a motion for $50,000?
Moved by Moravsek. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Hello? What would you like to tell us about this CIP?
Susan Austin, the Assistant Superintendent, and I'm Sam Kilpatrick. I'm the Director of Buildings and Grounds. Back about a year and a half ago, during the Detroit water debacle, we tested water in our buildings, all of our school buildings. And in two buildings, Claude Chester School, well, actually three buildings, Pleasant Valley, Claude Chester, and Fitch High School, an area of each of those buildings, we detected lead in the water. The water that is delivered to us by Groton Utilities is excellent when it comes into the building, but these buildings were built in the 50s with fixtures and of course lead in the pipes, so on and so forth. So it's coming from the older pipes in the building. So since Pleasant Valley is not a school building, we've left that off the list. However, in the two buildings that are left, Claude Chester and Fitch High School, we've isolated those areas that have lead in the water and are not using that presently. Claude Chester School, it's in the nurses' office area, that area of the building. We've turned, we don't use that water for drinking any longer. We're providing bottled water at this time. Fitch High School, it's in the 2000s wing, which is the business wing at the school. And we've shut that water off completely to those fountains in that area. Anybody who needs bottled water, we've, we've been providing that for the last year and a half. And so this is for plans to develop, plans and specifications to remediate this situation.
Counselor Parker?
Is Claude Chester one of the schools slated to be closed eventually?
It is.
Okay. And if we're doing plans for it, how do you, how would it work? I mean, you said only one area. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Counselor Franco?
So with Claude Chester being scheduled to be closed, what is the cost of supplying bottled water for the year at Claude Chester?
I don't have that figure, but it would be less than 1,000, I would think, less than 1,000, providing water for that.
And what year is that scheduled to be closed?
Well, it's, it's all dependent upon our building projects, meaning the middle school project, which is being held up at this time a bit, and the two elementary, the two middle schools that will be converted to elementary schools. So I would say at, at the earliest two years, probably three years would be the earliest.
Counselor Heed?
When I first read this, I thought it was like throughout the entire building. So it seems like we've isolated it and it's probably the fixtures, like you say it is. But how much would it cost to hire the outside architect or consultant to come in and figure out, is that really what the problem is? Or are we fixing something that may not be broken?
Well, actually, my department actually changed fixtures. We actually crawled down in the crawl spaces, took some of the lead fittings out and replaced them. And the, the tests after that still indicated lead in those areas. So it's, I, I believe that it's a matter of replacing those, those water lines in those areas that are servicing those parts of the building.
Counselor Schmidt?
You said $1,000 for replacing water at Claude Chester. How much does it cost at the high school at Fitch? What would be the total water supply cost with the bottled water?
Well, that $1,000 is a guess on my part, but. Well, that $1,000 is a guess on my part, but we're paying, we're sending less water to Fitch, there are more, more areas that the kids can use up at Fitch High School.
So, but that's a long time. You know, Fitch is here to stay, so that's, we've gotta, you know, fix the problem eventually at Fitch.
Franco and then Natwater?
So is it just a couple of water fountains? I don't exactly know what you're talking about.
Well, no, there are sinks, there are water fountains. The nurses' office at Claude Chester, there are also water fountains in the kindergarten rooms, that area, that whole, that whole wing of the building at Claude Chester.
Okay, but at Fitch, it's just...
At Fitch, it were water fountains, but...
It's like just water fountains?
That's, that's all that we tested, we didn't, we didn't test showers, for instance, but...
And sinks, you tested sinks?
Any drinking areas, we randomly tested drinking area, drinking water.
So...
Just getting your cue.
All right. I don't wanna make a motion yet, but I would suggest if we're going to go forward with funding any of this, that we would not do Claude Chester simply because it's going to be torn down.
So you don't wanna make a motion?
I don't wanna make a motion yet.
Okay. Councillor Atwater and then Mr. Burden?
I agree with you, Rachel, by the way. As far as, it says that the first test showed that the water was within allowable limits, and then it says further down, new results continue to show presence of lead at unacceptable levels. I'm just, I'm wondering, when you were in there doing your changing of fixtures and so forth, if you shook the pipes to let more lead come free or not? But, but the real concern I have is that $50,000 for development of plans and specifications for water service, to me, seems outrageous. My question would be, how much lead pipe is throughout Fitch High School? And would it be better to just go ahead and pay the cost of replacing what's there, rather than spending 150, or spending $50,000 for a study, and then another 150 on top of that for construction? I mean, it just seems like an awful lot of money.
I don't know exactly how to answer that, other than engineers get paid a lot of money for the work that they do, and if we're too, and we're not positive at this point whether the state would allow this under a reimbursement rate, but if we didn't have an architect, engineer do the design work, it certainly would not be reimbursable by the state.
What are the chances of it being reimbursed by the state now, anyway?
I don't have an answer to that question.
Mr. Burden?
Just wondering if you did take Claude Chester out of that study, would you expect much savings? Would it reduce the $50,000 much?
I don't think we'd, I don't think we'd get a great savings on it.
What do you, what do you mean, you wouldn't get a great savings? You wouldn't say it's maybe half the price if you only did one school, not the other?
I, I, I think there's an economy of scale there in doing the two buildings at the same time.
Councillor Parker and then Zepary?
You mean Parker?
I did say Parker.
You did say Parker?
Parker and then Zepary?
Okay. Which side of Claude Chester? The nurses' office and you said the kindergarten rooms, which is the old, the other side of the building, correct?
If you went in the front door of the building, it would be to the left of the office.
The left of the office. And all the other rooms, all the other fountains are fine?
All that were tested, tested fine, yes.
So there has to be a way of figuring, they can figure that portion out and subtract it out, because if the rest of the building, so that means fourth grade, fifth grade, third grade, and the other, first through the other rooms are fine, so the nurse is using the sink water to give water to the kids?
No. Well, they did previously, but they're not doing that now, we have bottled water right now.
They closed it off, so we're using the bottled water.
I know, but before then, you, you got, they were giving them water from the sink, instead of having a fountain inside the...
I, I was never in the office, office when they gave kids water from the sink, but I suspect that that probably would happen.
I think...
That was the water source in that room.
I think since, I'm, I'm in agreement with the taking out Claude Chester because of, it's slated to be closed in a few years, and just keep providing the bottled water.
Councillors, I'm sorry. Councillors Zepary and then Overy?
I think I'm saying the same thing, or asking the same question that Councillor Parker just asked. If you know that part of the building has lead and the rest of the structure does not have lead, can't you determine where the part that has lead originates from the unleaded portion, and then replace the lines from there distally without doing a whole lot of planning? Just assume that there is a problem in there, and you should be able to find, just by the faucets that are producing lead, and knowing where those pipes travel from and where they branch from, you should be able to find the common line, and then rebuild it from there, without spending $50,000 in, in architectural fees or whatever.
Councillor Overy?
Well, personally, I think that we should just keep taking water from Claude Chester and put 25,000 into beginning some investigations at Fitch. So I'd like to move a figure of 25,000, and I would suggest you get a good plumber...
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
A second.
Seconded by Franco. Go ahead.
Having two sons that are plumbers, I would suggest you get a good plumber, that they can go right in there and fix that up just fine for you.
Councillor Franco?
It's probably not as simple as that, I understand.
Councillor Franco?
If we have the original number and then an amended number...
You're gonna have two amendments.
Two amendments?
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying it's two fountains at Fitch High School?
Two fountains tested to have lead in them, yes. We didn't test every fountain, but it's that section of the building.
You didn't test every fountain? After you found lead in some, you didn't test them all?
No.
Why is that?
Because they're, we, we did them randomly throughout the building. That was what was recommended by the water company and by the tester.
But when you did find lead, you didn't go test the rest of them?
We have all, in that section of the building, we did, yes.
But not the rest of them?
Not in the rest of the building, no, we didn't find anything else in the rest. A lot of the building is new section of the building, too.
Okay.
This was the older section.
Okay. So there are some in the older section that you don't know about, know if they may have lead, but two of them you know for sure?
That's correct. There may be some that were not tested.
And is, what kind of fee are you looking at to test them? Test all the ones in the old part of the building?
I'd have to get, I'd have to get a number from the, from the contractor.
Well, what did it cost to do the two of them?
It was a year and a half ago, I really, I don't have that number off the top of my head at the moment.
I don't, I'm having a hard time thinking that you found lead in two of them and you didn't test the rest of them, I'm having a very difficult time with that. And are the all of them shut down now, or just the two that you found lead?
What's the question?
Are all of the fountains that you, are shut down in the older side now because you found lead in two of them?
Yes.
All of them are shut down?
Yeah, that section is shut off.
And how many fountains total are there, then?
I don't know, I'd have, I'd have to look at the plan.
Okay.
I think Ms. Austin said this earlier, we're keeping Fitch, that's gonna be our high school, I think we need to do the work there and mitigate whatever risks we have for our kids. If the rest of the council is so inclined to keep feeding bottled water to the kids at Claude Chester, but that building's not gonna be torn down for a good three, four years, we're just still gonna have kids in that building. You know, we don't even have to have shovel in the ground for the middle school until 19, and then the two middles, the other two schools aren't gonna be converted until after that's done. So we're looking at quite a few years here before the kids are actually out of Claude Chester, so I would be hesitant to not try to remedy the situation.
Councillor Overy, Moravsek, Zepary?
Well, I don't agree with you because of the fact, if it's running about $1,000 a year for water, if we went 10 years, that's $10,000. If we take $25,000 and start working on Fitch, that makes sense to me. But to put any money into a school that we know eventually we're either gonna tear it down or sell it, you know, I, I just can't agree with you. It's not anything that's hurting the kids, as long as we have water for them.
Councillor Moravsek and then Zepary?
Yeah, my, my understanding that was Claude Chester was gonna be used as a recreation building in the future, so that building, to my knowledge, would not be torn down, but probably renovated for the Parks and Rec people. That's the way I understood it.
That's what I've heard, but that's gonna be up to the council, did he say?
Yeah, but I mean, that, that's what the thinking was. As far as those, the lead in those drinking fountains, is it a self-contained drinking fountain, fountain with a cooler, with a cooler and everything?
Some are, some were built into the walls, but some are self-contained.
Okay, so the ones that are built into the wall, were they tested?
Some were and some were not, yes.
And the lead was in the wall?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, of course, the job would have to go out to bid, so there could be the possibility when it goes out to bid, that we would be able to take, you know, depending on what the council sees as the right amount, you know, it might be that they can inspect that area at Claude, too, for us, but that's all, you know, dependent on, you know, having the project go out to bid.
Councillor Zepary?
I don't think we have sufficient information here. I'm concerned that you've tested the water at Fitch at only two, two fountains, and determined that the whole building is in trouble. I'm also concerned that had you tested more broadly, you would be able to trace back to the common origin of those, of all of those spigots, and localize the site or the section of piping that needs replacing. And I, I frankly think that we should not approve any money at this time for this, until it is, it's explored more thoroughly by the engineers in the department.
With all due respect, Mrs. Zepary, a lot of those pipes are in slabs, behind walls, through walls, so on and so forth, so they're not so easily identified. But we have identified specific areas, so that we know that we can get to a, an area and mitigate the problem.
The thing is that if you, if you find that there's lead coming through them, you're gonna have to get into those walls, anyway. And, and with all due respect, I think that's, you know, right now, we're throwing money at this, where it should have been studied a little bit better, and we should have had more thorough information, and very frankly, we should have had it sooner than a year and a half after it was discovered. So I, I, I think that it is possible to get Leanne's sons to come down and help you out with that, but I think you do need to test more for the lead and see just where it is coming from, and you should be able to reason back by the pi, the diagrams of how the pipes were laid, to find a common source, and then work back from there, without spending a whole lot of money for engineering.
Is this the first year that this has been in the CIP?
We received no funding last year at all for any of our projects.
Councillor Atwater?
I guess to answer Councillor Moravsek's comment about the Parks and Recreation, there's a building next to the town office to be named at a later date, that might also be used for Parks and Recreation, so I don't think we need to worry about keeping Claude Chester for that. I kind of agree with Councillor Zepary that maybe having a plumber come in and giving us a cost of what it would cost to replace the pipes at Fitch, I mean, it seems like we're spending a lot of money on services and inquiries and so forth, and it may be a lot less expensive just to do it, and that, that would be my feeling, so.
Well, I have plumbers on staff, and my plumbers have been working on the problem. My plumbers actually went down into the tunnels and changed the fittings and so on and so forth, that's, that's what we did previously, so.
And we did work with the water company to do a really extensive job in trying to find where those areas are, that's why we know where those locations are at this time.
Then, then if you've done that, why don't you just go ahead and replace it? I, I don't understand what we need, a development of plans and specifications for water needs, I mean, we seem to know that here's a section that's got a problem, fix it.
Councillor Moravsek?
I'm gonna put my engineering hat on. Where are the plans, the piping plans? The piping plans will show what the material is made out of, where the joints are, and the, you know, the, the, whatever else they used on those lines. That should be your first attack. Get the plans, get the piping plans, look at them.
We've looked at the plans. A lot of plans don't exist any longer, I don't know if you're aware that there was a fire in the Board of Education building that was in La Quonique Bridge some years ago, and lots of those plans don't exist any longer.
Who's the engineering company that built that school?
I don't know, I don't have that answer for you right now, I can look it up.
Are there any other questions? Any other comments, motions, anything? Councillor Franco?
I'm sorry. So, so we're just gonna talk about Fitch for a moment. There are two fountains that you know, and in this 50,000, because in here you're saying you're gonna replace the, the water supply, I mean, I would assume you're saying the fountains, is that what you're talking about?
No, we're talking about the service, the actual pipes that are probably in slabs, walls, so on and so forth.
And you didn't, you've already taken the pipes that are in...
Where, where we could get to them, we've changed some of them, yes.
You've changed what you could.
Not pipes, but fittings.
The fittings, but you were going, it says somewhere in here that you were going to take, is to change the fixtures. What exactly are the fixtures? Is that the water fountain itself?
No, those would be, for instance, the faucet at the nurses' office in the, in the, at Claude Chester School, things like that.
So if you're talking about a water fountain, what is the fixture?
The water fountain, well, it could have been a water fountain as well.
So if you have two water fountains, or just take Fitch alone?
Okay.
You have two water fountains, and then how many more are there that are turned off right now? Grand total?
Water fountains, or...
That's where you're getting the drinking supply from, right?
There's probably four or five shut off.
And you're going to try and replace those fixtures before you go to the engineering?
No, we've already, well, since this was written, we've already changed both fittings and fixtures.
Well, then, because what I'm reading here, that's not what, it says the next step in our mitigation plan is to change the fixtures affected and retest. So the paperwork that I have is not correct, is what you're saying? This wasn't updated for this budget?
We, we've changed the fixtures since this was written, yes. This was submitted back in August, September, the way we wrote this.
So this was submitted in the summer, basically last summer, and since then you've changed out the water fountains themselves at Fitch, and they still have the lead?
Not the water fountains themselves, no.
Then what are the fixtures?
Sinks, things like that.
At Fitch?
That were shut off previously, yes.
At Fitch, there are the sinks?
Yes.
I'm confused, because I thought there were water fountains we were shutting off at Fitch.
We did shut off the water fountains, too.
So, maybe help clarify in my mind, so you did, you did random testing throughout the Fitch High School. You found lead in one area that you could isolate as the old part of the building, and therefore you turned off all the water, the old part of the building. Because you didn't find lead in any of the new part, those things are all fine?
Yes.
So then the money here is gonna be to figure out how you're gonna go in and replace everything in the old part of Fitch?
Oh, yes, the infrastructure, the piping that below the slabs, in the walls, so on and so forth.
Okay. Councillor Parker?
When was the water last tested? I know it says something was accomplished in...
I know it says something was accomplished in 2016. Did you guys test how often?
We have not tested since that testing.
You haven't, did you change the... So we haven't tested since 2016, so can we find out about getting another test done to see what's going on?
We can.
Because I think if we're, it's 2018 now, so we should have at least tested last year, sometime last year, just to confirm that everything's still the same thing.
We initially tested with Groton Utilities and the second set of testing was done by Mystic Air.
In 2016?
I don't know the exact, I'd have to look up the paperwork to see the exact dates, but it was after we did the mitigation work.
I don't want to sound combative. I am confused because what you're telling me is not making sense to me. You said you changed the fixtures at Fitch after the summertime, but then you did not test to see if they had lead in them after you've changed the fixtures. Because our last testing was in 2016, but you're telling me in 2017, you've changed the fixtures and you have not checked for lead again?
I have to check the day, I'll have to check the dates on that.
I can't, I personally cannot vote on this at all. Because I don't know what's going on, I don't know, if you, if you change fixtures and you still haven't tested, there's a problem. And there, I don't get this. So I personally don't want to vote on this tonight.
I agree.
It says new test results.
It does say new test results. So are you making a motion to delay this vote to another night, keeping in mind we only have one more night?
Can they come back to us again tomorrow, then?
Let me check with the finance director because, because this is a capital improvement one, she would have to do recalculations on that. Sorry, Cindy. Well, she might be able to if it's just one, if it's just one account.
Are we here tonight?
Right, right.
But I will, I will need a number to do the final, the capital reserve contribution and to vote on the 501 fund. I will need final numbers.
So it would have to be, if you want to delay, you're going to, we're going to have to delay it till tomorrow night, the very first item. That way she can then break and do her calculation that she needs before we move the rest of the accounts, because the rest of the accounts are dependent upon what we do here.
Would it be possible for you guys to come back tomorrow and to bring that information to us or have it emailed?
I can bring that information, but we couldn't get testing done that quickly.
No, not that, I understand the testing part, but it'd be nice to see you.
Probably takes two weeks to get the results on the test. It goes out to a separate lab.
Not worried about the testing, I want to know when the last testing was done. I know it would have to be redone, but I would like to know when the last time they were done.
Okay.
So Ms. Austin, would you all be able to come back tomorrow evening?
I might not be able to.
I'll come back tomorrow evening.
But we could even put together a sheet that would kind of give you the chronological... That might help better.
For each of the schools so that you can see the work that's been done. Because my understanding has been that we had realized through this massive testing in both schools where the areas of concern were. And that our staff did try to go in to resolve it themselves, but then found out after being tested that it wasn't resolved. So, you know, hence, we're trying to figure out through engineering, where is the exact location instead of just trying to hit and miss and problem solve, you know, that way, which could cost you a lot of money, to really figure out where is the source and, but we could probably put something together tomorrow that would kind of lay it all out with the dates.
That sounds great. Thank you.
So Counselor Franco, did you wish to make a motion at this point?
I make a motion to postpone the water service needs for the education until April 18th at 6:00 PM.
Second?
So a move to postpone 5A until Wednesday, April 18th at 6 o'clock. Move by Franco, seconded by Parker. Correct?
Yes.
So all those in favor of postponing the vote on 5A, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're in the middle of a vote. Abstentions? Okay, so eight to one to zero, so that passed. Yes.
Would it be a good idea to get that information to the council prior to the meeting? The timeline? Would that be possible?
If you could email, that would be great. That way you'd have time to mull things about if you needed to.
As well as the price, if you could break it out for Claude Chester, if you have that capability for this going forward with your 50.
Ms. Molding, are you good with a vote on that? Thank you. I think that's it.
That was the only thing, I think, on our list.
Yes, thank you. We'll see you tomorrow. And I see Mr. Berry has arrived, so we can go back up to 4H and 4I. So Counselor Parker, when you're ready, then, 4H, please.
4H?
Page 219.
Okay. For 4H Spicer Park Dock, I move 26,000.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Heed. All right, so we, this is the dock at Spicer Park. Thank you for bouncing between meetings.
Sorry, I wasn't here earlier.
That's all right. We kept busy.
What's that?
We kept busy.
Yes. Clearly. Yes, so this particular project, we're asking for approval. There would be no tax money from this, for this particular project. We're looking to do this all through fundraising and through the fees that we collect. We rent spaces for kayaks, canoes, things like that down in Spicer Park. We keep that money in a special account. We currently have $15,000. We anticipate collecting another 7,500 this spring and, which would give us over 22, and we would fundraise the rest. And this is to go to replace, there's a wooden section, before you get out to the new boat dock, there's a wooden section that was previously anchored to some stone piers. This wooden section is about 30 years old and is deteriorating to a point where we can't repair it anymore. It currently does not have any railings, which we feel is a safety concern because the Fitch High School rowing team, the Magnet School rowing team, use this to carry their boats out, and there should be railings on it. Not this winter, but the previous winter, one of the storms actually lifted the pier up off the stone pilings. We've made some temporary repairs, but need to come up with a more permanent solution. So that's kind of a brief summary of the, of this proposed project.
Are there questions for Mr. Berry? Counselors, appear.
Now, you said you expect you're going to have grant money, fundraising that will amount to $60,000 in the, so what I have here says fundraising efforts raised $60,000 to entirely fund the project without impact on taxes.
Yeah, the 60,000, that is correct. We previously raised $60,000 to replace the portion of the bridge, or the portion of the dock. That was done a couple of years ago.
And do you have any of that 60,000 left?
No, we expended that entire amount. So since that time, two seasons have passed, we've collected approximately $7,500 each season. That money has gone into an account specific for the community boating dock.
And currently, you have what, 15,000?
And currently, we have 15,000, right?
And when will you expend 26,000?
Well, that would depend on our fundraising efforts. Ideally, we'd love to get it done this spring. Realistically, that probably would not happen. But we certainly anticipate that it would happen within the next three years, which is...
But you're asking us to appropriate $26,000 now. That would be $26,000 of taxpayers' money or at least $11,000 of taxpayers' money.
No, there's no taxpayer money involved in this at all.
So if we appropriate, Ms. Landry, if we appropriate $26,000, that doesn't affect the mill rate at all?
No, what he's asking you to do is just to authorize the project, and they will get the funding through fundraising. It will not come out of the capital reserve fund.
Okay.
And that's indicated in each of the CIPs, it gives you the funding source, and it has it listed as an O down there, so fundraising and grants. So we're just authorizing him to do this. Counselor Franco.
Correct.
I just wanted to know, what is your long-term outlook for this property?
Well, I think it's going to continue to remain the community boating area. Like I mentioned earlier, the high school rowing team uses it, the Magnet School rowing, we use it for a number of our programs. I can't speak to the continued use of the building, that's not my decision, but certainly, I think the boating portion, I can't see it moving anyplace else. We've, the boating community has raised a considerable amount of money. They raised the 60,000 for the dock. They've also, five years ago, completed, fundraised and built a shell house. So there's a huge community investment in that, part of that parcel. I'm not sure if that answers your question, or you were asking about the building, but that's a Gary Snyder question.
No, I was just asking about, like, you're planning on using the boat launch?
Oh, absolutely.
Into the future.
Yes, yeah. It's an ideal practice spot for, you know, for rowing, because it's a sheltered area. So it makes an ideal spot for teams to practice.
Okay. Do you have a lot of space for kayaks to be stored there for rent?
We do. Are you interested in the spot?
I know somebody.
Okay.
Counselor Atwater.
Excuse my ignorance, Mayor, but if we're voting on this for the project to go ahead, why is there a dollar amount if that's going to come from outside fundraising?
We have to authorize him to be able to spend any money. So it doesn't matter what the source of the money is, we still have to give him permission to spend it. And if he doesn't get it, then he can't spend it. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Are you ready to vote? So then we will vote on...
Oops.
CIP 4H for $26,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So move unanimously. Counselor Franco, CIP 4I on page 220.
I move a capital improvement program for the 55-plus community fitness zone for $105,000.
Moved by Franco. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Atwater.
Since this project was originally proposed, and I'm not sure if it was in fiscal year ending 18 or 17, this has been on the books for a couple of years, since that time, another, a similar project has been proposed as part of a proposed new development here within Groton. So at this time, we're not planning on doing, moving forward with this particular project because if it's going to take place inside a, within the scope of a new residential project, I don't see the need to do this. But at the time this was proposed, that wasn't, that wasn't in the, hadn't been proposed, so we weren't aware of it, but since that time it has been, so I'm actually not asking for this money to be appropriated at this time.
So is there, Counselor Schmidt?
I just wanted to ask, if it's going to be inside of a residential project, will it be also available to all citizens of Groton?
Yes. Yeah, the developer has indicated that that is the case, and he's been working with us to ensure that various recreational, various town recreational needs will be met as part of this proposed project.
Excellent.
Counselor Heed and then Parker.
I'll make a motion of zero.
Second.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Parker for zero for CIP 4I. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the zero first. All those in favor of zero for CIP 4I, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are on to public buildings. Are you golf courses as well? Or is that Mr. Schneider? Mr. Schneider?
[laughing].
So we're on page 223. Counselor Heed.
I'll make a motion for $35,000.
Moved by Heed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Moravcik.
Counsel, just bear with me for a second. The department, the department is requesting these funds to replace the ramp, the current existing ramp to the par for clubhouse, the building. That's the ramp that faces Plant Street. What we will be replacing the existing structure with was, is a current, of course, ADA and approved design. The existing decking system's in poor condition, doesn't meet the ADA's requirements. We are, what we'll do is complete removal of the deck and ramp, replacing them with a co-complying deck, of course. The structure will be pressure-treated and we'll be using a composite decking and a PVC rail system, so we're estimating $35,000 for that. We'll do the design. The money is appropriated both, both by the council and the RTM. We will then prepare plans, and we need to go to the city planning department to see if we need just a model, site plan, what site plan approval we do need. It may be just an administrative site plan approval, could be a full site plan approval. We'll work through that. And then, of course, go through the different code officials. So we've estimated it out, and it's, with the contingency, it's $35,000.
Other questions for Mr. Schneider? Counselor Aubrey.
Is there any anticipation of making that entire area look a little better, like covering up the gas tanks you have there and some of the other things that would make it look much more attractive?
The area that, there is the fuel tank, there's existing fuel tank, that's a white fence that is going to remain. The other areas are the responsibility of the restaurant owner to maintain. We, we think we have enough funds to patch the asphalt there. There may be some modification to that grassy island that's there. We might have to take some of that out to get the width that we need to get trucks from around the, into the area. So we will clean it up, but to clean it up more than what just doing the ramp is, it's, the funding's not there. So we'll, we'll take what we have to do with the front ramp to get that all done properly, replace it all. And the rest of the stuff is really the responsibility of the, of the restaurant people to keep it clean.
I understand what's on the left-hand side, it's their responsibility. I'm talking about how it looks when you walk up to it, which is pretty poor right now. And as I say, the gas tanks are there, needs to have something in front of it, and that area really needs some attention. And I hope that can be part of it.
Counselor Franco and then Mr. Burt.
The golf house is, is 100 years old. Is that considered a historic building?
No.
It's not. I was going to see if there was any kind of funding for that, if it was, so.
We checked.
You already checked?
We've checked, it's not on the list.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Burt?
I was just going to mention, the first month I arrived here, I met with one of the operators who said this was the priority. And I just met with both operators about a month ago, and they said, I went over what the plans are, and they said this is really needed and this is a good step towards making it a more attractive entrance. Understanding that, you know, we see how that comes out, make the dollar stretch as far as possible, and then we can see what we need to address after that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
It says that the toilets are only open if the restaurant is open. Are there other toilet facilities that are there for the golfers?
Correct, but they're not ADA. There's no handicap toilets there. It is the, toilets are right, right outside the, boy, will you check in for, I don't play golf, so will you check in for golf?
Clubhouse.
Clubhouse. It, there's a set of male and female toilets, but they're not handicap accessible.
Anything else? Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on $35,000 for CIP 6K. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously. CIP 6M Police on page 224. Counselor Aubrey, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Busy looking at something here. Let's see, we'll move a number of 190,000.
Moved by Aubrey.
Second.
Seconded by Heed. Seconded by Heath. Thank you. Hi.
So you're going to have both of us.
Tell us all about it.
So, and the project has really two points, or two sub-products. One is the completion of the renovations to the existing firing range. That firing range was installed in 1979. It's been used constantly by the police department for their training. The other portions is to do some renovations to the desk officer work area to allow greater interaction with the dispatch. If you go up there now, the desk office area is really separated from the, from the dispatchers itself. So what will be required to do is take a wall down, that's the easy part. Unfortunately, there's ventilation issues, because when you take a wall down, now we're going to have ventilation systems, subsystems fighting each other, so we're going to have to do some duck work. We're going to have to do some fire, fire code issues with the fire stopping. We're going to have to then put some sensors, move some sprinklers around and that. So it is really not just taking the wall down, it's doing the mechanicals that are, that are driving that cost. So with that, the project is $490,000.
And I believe that covers the cost of both the range, as well as the work that Director Schneider just mentioned. I would point out that we've had significant renovations in our range as of the last several months. This is the last part of the project, I know we're talking about some other things later on. Quite frankly, in the, in the greater scheme of things, the range project would, in my mind, would be a lower priority for our needs than some of the stuff I'm going to be before you, talking about in a few minutes. I would just wanted to point that out, because there's some things that I think are much more important to us. The desk area clearly is integrated with some of the things I'm going to be talking to you about in a few minutes.
So what would it cost just to take care of the desk area, to have that opened up so that that officer was more accessible to the rest of the department?
We estimate about $50,000.
Make a motion for $50,000.
Second. Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker, so first amended motion of $50,000 for 6M. Is there any discussion, Councilor Franco?
So what I, when I read through this, the biggest safety part I thought in here would be the non-slip stair nosings that are loose and can't be firmly
Oh, that's, that's an exterior building project.
Right, the steps.
Right, all of the stuff, we've identified a lot of items that still need to be done to police station. The police station was going to get a major renovation to the cell area, the Sally Port, five years ago, four years ago, and that did not pass a referendum, but that was to address all of the items from paving of parking lots, to the concrete work, to the ventilation systems, to the replacement of the boilers and that, that was voted down by the public, so we're now doing this piecemeal.
Okay, so to piecemeal it, to save the stairs so people aren't tripping up and down the stairs, possibly?
Well, what, we have been doing the interior, interior repairs, we have been doing the concrete repairs. If the nosings are loose, we will fix them, we'll epoxy them back in. It was just, some of the, some of the capstones, if you go up to police department, some of the capstones are failing because of the salt use, some of the nosings on the stairs out here around Town Hall Lane, because it's the same way. You have the metal non-stripped nosing that's becoming delaminated from the concrete because of the salt usage. So what we do is we chip it away, and we put a new nosing in. It'd be better to replace the whole thing.
With Chief Fazaro making the statement he just said, as these may be the lower priorities, as there are things that are coming up that are higher priorities?
There, I mean, clearly, there's some of it that's cosmetic, and there's some of it that's clearly deteriorating to the point where we do have some, we have a handicap accessible ramp in the front of the building, I think that's one of the things covered in this. I don't believe it's yet at the point where it's a safety hazard, but it's probably something that should be addressed appropriately.
I would like to make a motion to have a zero fund on this.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Obray?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Councilor Franco, move zero for CIP 6M. And I don't know if they heard your rationale.
And my rationale is because Chief Fazaro said this is not his priority, and this can wait.
May I, may I make a clarification point on that?
Sure.
That's in reference to the range, not, not to the desk operations area. So they're part of the same CIP. So my, my point was regarding the range exclusively.
Okay. Councilor Moravsek?
Yeah, I was going to talk about the range. If we delay this work, would it be a safety issue at the range?
I don't believe it to be a safety issue, but, you know, it's a 40-year-old backstop that's had hundreds of thousands of rounds of ammunition impacted over 40 years. Again, is it functional right now? It's functional, it services our needs. We did have a substantial improvement made to it this last year, you know, that was part of the same CIP. Put new target carriers in it, put a new operating system. The range does look almost new, except for the backstop. Can we survive with the backstop the way it is now for a short term? Sure. Again, I, you know, we, they're in the same capital improvement project, but my, my reference to what's my priority is further on in our discussions, but the desk area operations center is part of that same thing that I'm talking about.
How much is the, the backstop, Gary?
That was, that was $150,000. It was the backstop, some, some contingency, I just had it here. That's what happens when we have too many pieces of paper. The rubber berm, it's a rubber berm trap instead of a metal trap, that's 50,000 overhead baffles, 70,000 demolitions, 15, and the, we have $15,000 in there for the contingency. Because this would have to be bid out, so there'd be a bid package put out to do this work. So that was $150,000.
Councilor Zepari, and then Heath?
I, I visited with the chief and, at the police station, and learned that the, the bullet backstop has been inspected, and they have not been found to be faulty. It's, it's a concern of it because it's 40 years old. On the other hand, and I, and, and the chief and I discussed this, and we agreed that that's something that could be delayed. However, the, the wall between the dispatcher and the person receiving calls is an impediment to efficient communication, and has already led to some problems, as I understand, with, with the police performing its function safely. Those two people have to be in communication, and that wall is there from another era. I think the wall needs to come down. Now, for $50,000, I think is a lot of money, and I, and I told the chief that Rich and I would be glad to come over with a couple of hammers, take that wall there. But they don't quite get along with a close enough construction company. So I, I really think we have to remove that wall.
Councilor Heath?
I think part of removing the wall, one of the things I like about it is that, you know, having someone who's flexible enough to jump between being in the reception, going over and helping out with the phones, that's kind of the atmosphere I'd like to see us move forward with. And I was going to ask you which were your priorities out of the three? So you at least answered which one was your low priority, so I appreciate that. So that's why I'm supporting the 50,000. But to your point, we could do like a live HGTV kind of a show, and just go over and bash the wall out.
Are there any other questions or comments? So we have three motions on the floor, and we vote in reverse order. So we'll be voting first on the second amended figure of zero. So all those in favor of zero, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So that failed one to eight to zero, and Franco was the in favor. So now we're back to the first amended figure, which is the $50,000. Any further discussion on this number? Okay, so all those in favor of 50,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so that moved unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Chief. CIP 6N, fuel tank replacement, on page 225. Councilor Atwater?
Public Building 6, Number N, I'd make a motion for $400,000.
Moved by Atwater, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schmidt.
Okay, these are our main fuel tanks in the town for diesel and gasoline. It's the pumps that you pass in, you pass by into this building. They were installed approximately 29 years ago. With the, with the regulations that we fall under, life expectancies of these tanks are 30 years. That 30-year period comes up on these tanks, eight, 2019. By that time, they have to be, not abandoned, pump dry, and pulled out of the ground. What we, the town council and the RTM last year approved funds to do the preliminary design work, so we could come up with a good cost estimate, and we have proceeded with that. The tanks will be replaced in the same location. We did look at putting them in other places along the site here, we could find none. The tanks will be replaced, they're existing two 10,000 gallon tanks, that's the right size for the amount of fuel that we pass, that we use on a monthly basis, that allows at least a tanker truck to come in from our vendor, a 5,000 gallon tanker truck, to drop a full load here, not a partial load. That helps us in the pricing of the fuel from what, from what the purchasing agent says. The department had requested $560,000, and that was to replace the canopy and the pumps at the same time. It's easier, more cost-effective to do everything at once. But when the town manager was asking for some recommendations, what just needs to be done is $400,000 worth of work, which is replacing the tanks, and we need to replace some sumps that take, that would capture spilled fuelage, fuel underneath the pumps. So what the plan is to do is to get the design finished up this fall, get the tanks, if the, if the funds are approved, get the tanks replaced, springtime, to have the tanks out of the ground by the time that the end of their life comes, comes around. So that price is $400,000.
Councilor Moravsek?
Yeah, Gary, while you're taking the tanks out, are you going to have a, a, another tanker?
What, what, we'd be looking at, at two options that we're looking at, is whether we can, we have refueled at Groton Utilities. We have a, like, mutual aid agreement with them, because they have their utility trucks there. They're, it has happened in the past, that the funding is, we will contact them, I won't complete a sentence here. They're under construction at the water treatment plant now, I think their pumps are still available, it would be available to us. We would go in there, we use a, a system before, we just use a regular pad of paper that we had in the mailbox, but we pay for the fuel. So that worked well. It also worked well when their pumps went down, they would refuel here. Our pumps have also been used when the school buses are systems. The school bus vendor owns the tanks, but when he was replacing those, the school buses needed to be fueled someplace, they're fueled up here, you know, so there is a type of mutual aid for our fueling. So we're looking at whether we can transfer the fuel. We, we would, we would try to drive the fuel on the tanks down to, when, with the minimum we have to transfer, we can place someplace else. Our first choice would be at Groton Utilities, is the fuel there. They're very close, that includes the police vehicles too, they're very close, that the contractor can then pump the tanks, pull them, put a new one in, and then away we go. I'd rather not have skid tanks, but we have used those before, too.
Sounds like a plan.
What's a skid tank?
It's just a, a large tank that's, that the, that's really on skids. It's a large portable tank that's exterior, it's above ground. They drop it off of a, a flatbed, it has pumps, it has monitoring equipment on it, it's double-walled.
Councilor Zepari?
I was just concerned about something in the, in the description. And it said that the, they provide fuel for paramedics and ambulances.
Correct.
Is that at town expense that we're providing fuel for the ambulances?
It's 100% reimbursable. So all the fire companies fuel here, as I said, the paramedics and that, they all fuel at the location, but it's billed back out, so there's no cost at the town.
That's the only thing I was curious about. You know, as much as I hate spending $400,000, I think we got to do.
And we've explored other options, as far as perhaps getting our fuel from the city of Groton, or perhaps contracting out to a private gas station?
The, and we, we have looked at that. Private gas stations, if, if we would have a fleet of just staff vehicles that were all over the place, if we were county government, and we had people from different villages and that, we'd probably use a credit card. But the credit card is, there's a system set up by the state, you pay the going price at that pump, there is no discounts. So whatever it is. Second thing is, what we had looked at, some of our concerns, is that during the emergencies, or when there's fuel shortages, and there was a couple in my lifetime here, where we, the fuel was guaranteed to come to the, the public sector versus the private sector. We have them here during the hurricanes and that. There'd be nothing worse than putting my trucks in front of a line at a private gas station, taking the fuel from people who want to have their generators or their vehicles. It's not pretty. We also mimic what the, we also have the DOT garages around here, if we could take from them, and during emergencies, the governor does allow that, but it's only during emergencies. So having them as a fueling site doesn't work out. We did take a look at, you know, some of the issues of going to the city of Groton, they have a smaller tanks there, you know, but it's 15 minutes each direction. So now we're adding 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes on a refueling, and that, and all of our police vehicles, all of the chief's police vehicles, fuel after each shift, they fuel up here. So really what we took a look at is the size of the tanks, the number of vehicles we have to fuel, and then the other services we, we provide to the, the fire services that fuel at our, our station here, which is open 24/7, so. So we did take a look at it, this is the most cost-effective.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on 400,000 for CIP 6N. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are on to CIP 6P, Groton Ambulance, on page 226. Councilor Schmidt, thank you.
I move $66,000 for Project P, the Groton ambulance, for repairs to the public building there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Mr. Schneider?
Oh, what this will do, the, the department had, came up with a list of items that totaled about $166,000, from a list of things that were, that were identified by the Groton ambulance people. The manager took a look at it, and he's recommending $66,000 to do those things that were involved, which is casement windows, patch the ceilings, storage doors in their maintenance bays, exterior siding, interior cleaning of surfaces, and resurfacing of the driveway and parking lot. So that was costed out to $66,000.
Other questions? Councilor Atwater?
Just one question, Gary, that you have a, a cost of $45,000 to install new garage doors, which I know isn't in here, but would it be better to do the garage doors rather than the resurfacing of the parking lot? They're both the same price.
The doors are functioning, they're working.
They are, okay.
They've got them working now, so they're original to the building. It's just like your own house garage doors, if they're, you know, it's, you have a priority. The resurfacing on the parking lots, those have failed. If you look at the one in front, it's just nothing but alligator crack surface. It's, it's not that the back parking lot is shot, too. So I would rather do those than work down the list on, on the other items. But they, they got the doors functioning, you know, they're not stuck open or closed.
Mr. Burt?
I was just going to mention, I know they did work on one of the bays just recently, because they had an issue, and they said they're planning on, out of their own money, doing work on some of the others, so.
Any other questions? Councilor Franco?
So we, this past year, we fixed the roof. Were there other, what other items were fixed as well?
I don't think anything besides roofs this year was.
The siding, some of the siding you fixed.
The roof, there, there's some siding work, there's some water infiltration from the roof that went on the siding. We replaced some of the T-111, the wood siding on the, on the building. We did that with our own staff.
So those are, so all the leakage is all taken care of?
Is completed, there's a new roof on it.
Councilor Zepari?
I understand that there's $6,000 for replacing stor, pardon me, storage doors. Pardon me, $4,000 for storage doors. That's in the interior of the building, isn't it?
That's, that's in the, that's in the truck bays, the ambulance bays. By regulation, they're not supposed to wash their vehicles outside, because you have to capture all the washwater. And so they may be doing some washing inside, and it's maintenance, but it was all veneer-type doors that have been there since 19, my God, 1980, I think, when the building was built. So they just, they're starting to just delaminate.
It's my impression that the ambulance company is responsible for repairs to the interior of the building. And the town is repair, is responsible. interior of the building, and the town is responsible for repairs to the exterior of the building. Is that correct?
I don't have the lease.
Well, in the capital improvement program project detail, it says, the first two lines, "The town leases several of its facilities to outside agencies. Although the leasing is responsible for repairs, maintenance, and alterations, the town is responsible for repairs to the building envelope and structure." Now, this would be repairs to the interior of the building, so that would be the less C who is responsible for that. Is that correct?
I think technically, though we don't currently have a lease where it expired many years ago, we're negotiating the new lease, but that's been the general agreement. The benefit is just because the roof went out for a while, we're trying to work together and make some repairs.
Yeah, so the $4,000 for the delaminated doors interiorly should be the ambulance's responsibility under that understanding.
It could be interpreted that way, yes.
Okay, and cleaning the roof for, the ceilings for $6,000 should also be the ambulance company's responsibility because that's an interior.
You're talking about the interior cleaning of surfaces?
Yes.
Part of that was with the roof repair and the concern of our mold and some of that, we got a cost for what would it be to thoroughly clean the place, but that is thought to be more related to the leaking, which we take as being our responsibility. So it's interior, but it's because of an exterior issue.
Well, as I told you, and previously, I have a problem with their getting a lease for a dollar a year and then demanding all kinds of repairs on the property to make it a prime piece of property for their use. I think that if we're going to lease it and take on the responsibilities of a landlord, we should get a reasonable rent for it, and we're not. And I think the less C should take on some of the responsibility for maintaining this property itself. Also, on the other hand, it would be far better for the town to simply give them the property, and then they can repair it any way they like. But for us to maintain the responsibility of the property and putting out now $66,000 is proposed to repair the property and getting returned a dollar a year is not common sense. And it's not as though this is a charity. This is an organization that charges hundreds of dollars for each service it provides. Does provide some free services, but so do all other private agencies. Witness Starbucks is providing free bathroom services these days for anybody that walks in the door. So it's, I, my feeling is that we shouldn't be paying for interior work if we haven't understood that we do the exterior, take care of the envelope of the building. That's what we should do. But as far as the interior, that should be their responsibility. And so I would move that we deduct the $6,000 for storage doors and the $4,000 for cleaning the, pardon me, the $4,000 for storage doors and the $6,000 for cleaning the ceilings and reduce the amount to $56,000.
So Counselors, a pair has made a motion for $56,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heed. I believe Mr. Burke wanted to say something, and then Muravsek in that water.
Just a minute. First of all, the, you know, the whole thing's, of course, a policy decision by the council. I'm operating under what the historic agreement had been, and the cleaning of the services was related to more art deficiency and not keeping up with the roof. That's why I put it in there. So I respectfully disagree on that piece of it, but certainly can understand the storage doors.
Counsel Muravsek in that water.
I'm just going to say, for years, we neglected that building, and as a result, a lot of damage occurred, and the interior doors that he's talking about is part of the building itself. When you rent a house and there's a damage to the door, the owner of that house should repair that, replace that door, not the renter. And, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I think we should be fair about this and wait until a new lease comes out, and if those items are going to be taken out of the new lease, all well and being, but the way it is now, I think we should leave it the way it is.
Counselor Atwater.
I just want to clarify that this is a charity in that it's a 501(c)(3) corporation, and the federal government does have strict guidelines as to how you qualify. So it is actually a charity because they are a 501(c)(3).
Well, I-
Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Counselors, a pair.
501(c)(3) is not a charity organization. A 501(c)(3) is a tax-exempt organization, and it supposedly gets tax-exempt because it's providing a public service, and there's no doubt it does provide a public service, as does Starbucks. But at this particular point, they're making cash, they're taking cash from people in large amounts of money to provide their services. Another ambulance company in town has its own ambulance garage and takes care of maintaining it itself, and this one is getting essentially a rent-free position and then not taking care of it. I think either you take care of it or you pay rent for it. That would cover at least the expenses of the upkeep. And admittedly, it was a dump to start with, is what Rich is saying, but it was a dump that was selected by them, and they decided to live in it. And once they decide to live in it, they should take care of it or move out.
Counselor Atwater.
I would just like to comment that the American Red Cross takes large sums of money from people also.
Are there any other comments or questions? We have two numbers on the, Counsel O'Grady, I'm sorry.
It wasn't a dump when they took it over, when they rented it originally. We have let it become that way, and I have to agree with the manager. I think that we should do, let's see, do a lease, then go forward. But why would anybody, you know, want to have a cooperative spirit to working this out if they are in a place that has the problems that are there? Those are our responsibilities because there was no true landlord-tenet relationship. We didn't have a lease for years. So I think it's our responsibility to take care of this, the manager's responsibility to do a good lease for the future, and we can move forward.
Counselor Franco?
I also think we need to have a very good lease going in the future. But at the moment, we cannot be like a slumlord and just be like, hey, it's a mess, just live in it. Come on, Joe. I mean, that's crazy.
Joe says, you fix it yourself.
Excuse me, Counsel, Manager Burke.
Just to bring up, my earlier direction from some other council was we're keeping the same basic structure. We're not charging, we're solely charging in the draft lease, the dollar a year, and if we were going to change course, I need to know that pretty quick. And then also, they mentioned on Saturday, they do some extra services going, you know, to sporting events and other things. I think having that, whereas I'm not sure that's provided by Mystic or not, so that relationship may change if they're charging some other, they may have to pull back on some of their other services. I'm not sure. I'm just inferring that, but I just, I want input before you define.
I think it should be very clear of who's responsible for what.
Right.
And I, just as we're sitting here going through this, how many things in our town have just been, we'll just push it off till next year, push it off till next year. I mean, there's, a bridge is going to fail soon in how many years, and it's been put off for many years, and it seems to be repetitive of what this town has done. So I think we have to at least take care of our building that we own and get it up to standards before we say, hey, now we've neglected it, and now these are the rules. You take care of these things, we'll take care of this. Because there is no lease at all right now. That's how I feel.
So we have, we have two numbers on the floor. One is $56,000, and the other is the original motion for $66,000. So it's for a difference of $10,000. So if there are no new comments on this, we'll vote the first amended figure first, which is the lower number, the $56,000. So all those in favor of $56,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So that failed. With Zepari in favor, eight opposed, zero abstaining. So we are back to the original motion of $66,000. Is there any additional discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, we'll vote on $66,000 for CIP 6P. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So that carries eight, one opposed, and zero abstentions. And at this point, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Gary.
We're back in session. We are on to CIP 7A on page 227. Counselors, a pair.
I move that we appropriate $97,000 for Project A-7, is it?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Zepari, seconded by Muravsek. So this is Mr. Hancock with us this evening to talk about technology.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This project was identified by our consultant client first about deficiencies for not being CGIS compliant at pretty much the public safety building. This entire initiative is pretty much working to get that up there. One of them is the servers, licenses, OS. We know 2008 is going to be terminated in 2020. We have some older systems. We got to bring operating systems up. The data center, as we sit right now, the data center in the police department, everybody has access to. So it needs a little bit more security up there. The network redesign is to better, it's actually in correlation with the second CIP I have up there with the firewall that we're looking to install. And $15,000 was for the EOC to upgrade monitors, technology in that, that building, that office space down there, to try to get more functional, and it is a pretty cramped space. I don't know how much you can really fit in there. The last part was the video surveillance. I know Sean has an initiative later on in the CIP, but this was like the, we have four or five or six video surveillances in town that are basically all standalone. The only one that we have on network is the library, and the police department still can't see it. So they're pretty much all standalones. So that's to bring that all together.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Hancock? Counselor Franco?
So this is considered a technology master plan.
Correct.
And then is the next item we're going to be voting on, the IT security, that's part of the master plan?
Correct, yes.
And then what about the park safety CAD RMS integration? Is that part of the master plan?
Different part of a plan.
So that's not part of the master plan?
No. It is part of the plan. It actually is part of the master plan to have an integrated CAD RMS system.
Okay, so if there, if this one, just let's hypothetically say this got pushed out till next year, the next page would also be pushed out till next year, and subsequently the CAD as well?
I would, I would weigh that this one could be pushed out to next year, the $97,000. I mean, things still have to be done. They will be pushed off and have to be addressed next year for the next four or five years. But the IT security one, I think is probably the most important one. I would, I would strongly want to implement this one at the police department.
Okay. Thank you. Counselors, a pair.
You said the, you're talking about the $97,000 can get pushed out to another year?
Yeah.
And will that mean that the entire project is backed up by a year so that instead of completing this in 2024, we complete it in 2025?
Yeah, something like that. I was gonna, I was gonna rewrite this and reprioritize some of these guys when, you know, if D does go through for the 92, that's our, really our base to put a firewall in there and a couple of other items for the police department, and then we can build off that with the rest of these items.
Chief Azaro, how does this affect the, your ability to continue your service as well?
We'll continue it, but we have obligations to protect some data and some of the security. We've had this conversation very recently. CGIS is the criminal justice information systems. We do have requirements to protect that and guard that information and to remain compliant with it. So I think that's what he's talking about, is ensuring that we maintain that compliance.
Correct.
So would that be a different appropriation? If we, if we vote down the $97,000, how do we assure the compliance that the chief is worried about?
7D.
Okay.
I think we're talking about two different things here.
Yeah, we are.
97 and 92.
Yeah. You said, so-
This one here, I would feel comfortable pushing off one year.
But you just said that you have to comply with the CGIS requirements, right? But that's listed in 7A, but I thought you just said 7D is the more important one.
7D is the more important one because that starts with the firewall that monitors and puts policy on all the traffic in and out of the public safety building. So that's, that's our base.
Right.
You know, without this, you know, this pretty much doesn't really work very well for us.
But in order, if we zeroed 7A, you're not going to be able to do your compliance.
We'll start to do our compliance. We're out of compliance without having a firewall up there.
Okay, I got you.
So, and like I said, that's, that's our base.
Okay.
And we work off policy and everything off the firewall.
I have a question for Mr. Burke. This client first, this is the thing we're trying to implement townwide with moving all the new software over. Does this have, if we would delay this, does this, is it interrelated to all the other things we're doing, or is this a standalone?
Client first is the company is looking at everything. There's a lot of diverse projects as part of that, but I don't think this would delay any of that.
No, the ERP won't be delayed because of this.
Okay. Counselor Heed.
So make motion of zero.
Is there a second? Who was that? I'm sorry.
Second.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Franco, for zero for CIP 7A. Are there questions or comments on this further?
He's the expert.
I'm sorry?
He's the expert. We'll go back to his decision.
Are you comfortable that if this were zeroed, we could get by for another year as long as you had the firewall, or is this going to be a problem?
I think installing the firewall is the most important. It's a firewall, two-factor, two-factor authentication for the officers and probably throughout the town is probably a good base and a good start to start being CGIS compliant.
Counselor Muravsek?
Yeah, but this is for record retention, and that's important.
This would protect the records. The firewall does protect the records.
Okay.
This is actually, we can talk about it when we get there, but it actually, it's going to isolate the public safety building itself, so, you know, people in town can't have access to any of the information up there.
How about the Russians?
Never know. Trying to keep them out.
Any further discussion? So we would be voting again reverse orders, so we'd be voting on the amount of zero first. All those in favor of zero for CIP 7A, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously.
I oppose.
Oh, I opposed it. I'm sorry. I apologize. So eight to one, was distracted, and the one is Muravsek. Ms. Molding, are we good? Thank you. Thank you. I apologize, Counsel Muravsek. We are on to CIP 7D, and this is, I don't remember who it was last. That was Zepari, so this is Muravsek, please.
I see security. I move the number 92,000.
Moved by Muravsek, seconded by Heed, and this is the one you said is very important.
This is, this is the one I consider the most important. This is a firewall that will install and isolate the building, the public safety building itself, and there is actually some breakdown of this, some other smaller firewalls to put between us and the state. Right now, we're plugged into the state switches. They could possibly come and go as they want, which is pretty unsafe. We have a couple wireless, we have a wireless network to the vehicles that we do have it locked down as best we could, but a firewall between that would be more helpful. And there's the community policing out there that has considered a pretty weak firewall, so I'd like to throw one out there. That's part of all of this, locking, locking the public safety building down.
Counsel Parker?
Is that still client first, or are you doing this internally?
This was a client-first initiative. We'll be doing this internally.
Or you're doing it internally for 92,000?
Correct. The firewall itself runs a- Correct. The firewall itself runs about forty-five thousand dollars. And that's with some engineering, some support from a vendor to get the two firewalls communication.
And the balance?
The balance is the two-factor authentication, meaning everybody logs into our network right now. You'd actually have a token, or you get a text to you with a code that you put that into authenticate yourself. That would have to be all police officers. I would like to move it throughout town and, and the MDTs.
Are there other questions?
No, I'm all set.
All right, seeing none, we will vote on ninety-two thousand dollars for CIP seven D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Are you opposed?
Abstaining.
I'm sorry. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Parker's abstaining. That passes. So we are on to CIP seven F on page two twenty-nine.
Mayor, if I may, I have a couple of documents the deputy chief and captain have, but if they could approach the council and just hand them out. There's two different documents. They look the same, but one's, one's about the CAD and RMS integration, and the other's about the radio, police radio system.
Thank you. We need a motion, please?
My turn to make a motion?
No, it's my turn. Sorry, I was, he went to talking. I move three hundred and twenty thousand for the Tech seven F, Public Safety Technology Section.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Moravsek. Thank you. So you have two handouts?
There may be a third. I think you may have already gotten the third, though.
Okay.
But there's two, two slides that look remarkably similar, but they talk about each issue separately. And I thought it would be easier to just, I knew there were some questions. I thought it would be easier to just go over it with, with you in that manner.
May I have two? I need one for records and one for me to write on. Do you have extra?
I don't have an extra. I might have, Ms. H.
I can share with him. I'll keep, I'll keep this one clean and I'll look on with Counselor Heath. Thank you.
I can only make ten copies, but I can email it to you. So the first is the computer-aided dispatch, and I'm sure there's questions about what, what is this and what are we looking at here. But we have, computer-aided dispatch is really the mechanism that our dispatchers and officers and people out in the field use to communicate with one another. Not just the radio, but to say if there's an incident that happens at a particular location, CAD will give certain information to the dispatchers about it. For instance, if there was a handicapped person there, or if there were fire hydrants nearby, or if there was a person that had firearms and it was domestic violence, that stuff's all captured in CAD. Records management is what we use in, in police work to write reports. Police reports, accident reports, calls for, calls for service are tracked in the CAD, and then they come over to the records management for a follow-up report. Unfortunately, the situation we find ourselves in now is we have two different systems. This is, in my experience, an anomaly. It's not a best practice. We have a CAD system, which is standalone. We have a records management system which stands alone. And what ends up happening is data isn't populated in both systems. So to give you an example, if an officer is dispatched to a call, let's say it's for a disturbance at a particular address in town, the dispatchers will enter the information in the CAD system. They'll dispatch the officer there, and the officer responds. So that, that stays in the system as a disturbance. Now, the officer gets there, they investigate it, they find out it's a burglary or domestic violence incident or something else. It resolves as something other than a disturbance. In the CAD system, it stays there. But in the records management system, the officer writes a report indicating it was a burglary or some other, some other case. Unfortunately, what ends up happening is there's a lot of data that goes into CAD that stays there, like names, addresses, witnesses, you know, caller information. It never comes over to the records management system. So when the officer is in the position of writing the report, now they have to duplicate all that effort. So the stuff that they saw on their mobile data terminal that they got in the field doesn't end up in their case report. They have to replicate it. And then there's a third system, which I didn't indicate in here, which is our booking system, which is standalone as well. None of these systems talk together. In fact, we've lost data. And if you recall, prior to my arrival as chief, we had to look into racial profiling reports that came up indicating that there was problems here in the town. Through my, you know, the team that we looked at and we discussed it with people that did the report, a lot of data we provided was inaccurate and didn't have the fidelity it needed for them to do a careful examination. So quite frankly, because of that, we ended up on a report for a variety of reasons, most of which was garbage in, garbage out. The, the information that was provided because these two standalone systems was getting convoluted, and we had people doing paper reports. And I know that the, at the end of the day, what, what does this cost and what is the savings? We're spending a lot of money on, on people's time and energy replicating reports, putting data from one system into another. It is not the standard in law enforcement. We've worked with our partners in the fire service and dispatch center, as well as emergency services, EMS, to make sure that we look at systems that have everyone's needs at heart. So we have a system for records management. If you see on the slide, it tells you what records management is. It's, I'm sorry, I've got these backwards. The records management vendor is actually IMC, and the computer-aided dispatch is Mobile Tech. IMC is used by other towns here in the state. Mobile Tech, unfortunately, is not, no longer in any other dispatch center or public safety entity within the state of Connecticut. So we're currently going through an analysis of what would be best and serve our needs the most. So that's kind of an overview and why we're looking to move in this direction. I, I hope that was a thumbnail sketch of what we've got here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If we were prioritizing the capital projects that you have, where does this rank with the radio system?
Number two. They're both high priorities. They both were identified on the Client First initiative. I know there's been questions about that. I know it's important our officers and dispatch staff to have an integrated system, but for reasons I'll get into why the other one is a priority is, is public safety and officer safety. We don't, I also want to point out, we do play, pay yearly maintenance fees. So depending on which way we go, it may be less money than the initial CIP has for the CAD project. I don't like to underestimate things and then come back and say we need more money or we can't do the project because we don't have enough, but it is possible that it could come in for less than the CIP has identified for.
Counselor Moravsek?
It sounds like a well-worth program. Is it available to the city and Groton Long Point?
City has a different records management system, and again, you know, I'm talking about what we need in our department. You know, I would, I would invite...
I'm just trying, I'm trying to get, get everybody on the same page.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very careful not to speak for my counterparts in other police departments, but could they, certainly, certainly the way we've looked at it is to make it available for anyone who would be interested in it. And in fact, my, my, the important thing for me is that we get a system that works for us, but that it's integrated with other law enforcement agencies here in Connecticut, Public Safety, Fire, and EMS. I don't want a system that's in a silo, so we're the only ones that have it, and the data that we have is not useful for other agencies. And more importantly, there's a cost associated with using a vendor that doesn't work here in Connecticut or doesn't have experience with Connecticut general statutes and the compliance that we need for racial profiling and providing information to the state and federal government. I, I think we've fallen into that trap before, where we've kind of gone with standalone systems that aren't good. It may seem good from the sales pitch, but when other people in Connecticut don't use it, it should set up a red flag that we shouldn't use it either. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah.
I believe the city has the integrated CAD RMS already, because we had talked about that a few years back.
I believe they do. They have...
I don't know if it's the same system, but I know theirs is integrated.
They have IMC. Most, most, most departments do in Connecticut. In this part of the state, there's really two providers. It's IMC, which is used by, we use it for the records management, but it's also used by Stonington, Norwich, a couple other, Groton City, a couple other municipalities. But of, one of the other vendors that we're looking at is a company called NextGen, which is a company out of, out of East Haven, which is used by eighty-some-odd departments here in Connecticut. So there's, we've gotten proposals. In the fall, we put out an RFI, a request for information, and received eight proposals. We've had a working group do an analysis on all of them to find out what's best, and that's, that consists of police officers, members of the fire service, because that's extremely important. We dispatch for the fire service here in town. Nobody else does. We also dispatch for the ambulance services, as well as some out-of-town entities. So all the stakeholders have been brought to the table to do an analysis of this, to figure out which system would be best for us.
I have another question, but do any of the other counselors have questions? Counselor Zepari?
Where the road meets the road is the police officer out in, out in his patrol car. How is this going to make a difference for him or her?
I think it's going to make a big difference, because right now, for a variety of reasons, there's officers out there. They've got a duplicate effort. When they're sitting in their patrol car and they conduct a traffic stop, there's a bunch of information they have to provide. Right now, they're doing it in duplicate. They're doing it in two different systems. They get on their mobile data terminal, they have to input stuff into CAD. And then they have to switch screens, they have to input into records management. You know, one of the things that I gauge a metric that I look at all the time is what we have for motor vehicle activity. There's a lot of work they're putting into just stopping someone for a traffic violation and generating the paperwork that goes along with it. We've, we've created a system here where there's a lot more work being done than needs to be done. It's inefficient. It doesn't capture the data that we need to capture. It shouldn't have happened, but it did, and we're moving forward on it. We're, I think it's, it's something that needs to be fixed. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Is there a safety issue for the officers who are using the current system as compared to the new?
If you would, you know, if they're unnecessarily delayed at a traffic stop, or, you know, they're more worried about inputting data that really should have come from dispatch than from them sitting in the car, you know, that can be considered a safety issue. I mean, if you stop there at a traffic stop and you're switching between a couple of different screens to get information and make sure it's right, it's, it's resulted in some, some lost data for us between the two systems. You know, there's a gap there. And, and we've spent a lot of money trying to make a connection between the two, and there never will be a connection because they're two different vendors.
Do they get any criminal data on the, on the, on the people they're stopping?
Yes. Some of the systems that we're looking at will certainly allow Collect, which is the Connecticut online law enforcement telecommunications system. It's our, it's our conduit to criminal databases, to motor vehicle stuff. So there are, part of the, part of the project is to get systems that incorporate that into it. Again, the big problem we have now is we've got two silos, and those silos don't connect. We need to have one. We don't have that now. And again, we pay service fees to both of these different companies. We should be only paying one service fee. Now, the pricing, obviously, is something that we'd have to do during, during any kind of contract negotiations with the, with the potential vendor. But we, I would defer to Brian Hancock on that, because he knows the fees were, he pays our maintenance fees, we're paying them to two different vendors for this stuff.
How much are the maintenance fees?
I think they're roughly about sixty grand a year, something to that, in that neighborhood.
To each of them?
Together, collectively.
Counselor Schmidt?
Would this help to eliminate the overtime that we now find necessary?
We certainly wouldn't eliminate it, but I mean, if officers, if, if data is being populated in one system and the officer goes back to write their police report later on, they've got much of it on their fingertips, then it's, it's no longer filling in the blanks and replicating data that they had, they already had. So again, there's data that sits in one system. The officers, when they go back and write their police report, have to start from scratch, writing it all over. The way it's supposed to work is the data would just go feed right into the fields. It's supposed to when they're writing the report. So, you know, conceivably, it could reduce some of it. It won't eliminate it, but, you know, there could be some reduction because we're going to be operating more efficiently. And I would suspect that we'd see more enforcement out there because officers would have more available time. Instead of taking data from one system, putting it into another, wasting all that time, they'd be out there being, doing more proactive work.
So my question has to do with seven G, which I realize we're not on, but it does, it does make a difference because the antenna improvements. And I know you had looked at that. And in my mind, I was weighing, I know, I realized the radio is the most important thing. And depending on how expensive the antenna upgrades are going to be, would have made my decision as to what I would do with the CAD RMS. So refresh my memory. What, what did they come back and tell us about the antenna for seven G?
That, seven G is the radio system, and I have another slide on that. But, but when we had spoken last, there was a concern we had about the antenna located in the back of the police department. Just so the other counselors are aware, what that, what that conversation consisted of is the antenna was erected in two thousand and seven, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and seven, standards changed. There was a fear on our part that if we were to put additional equipment on that tower structure, that it would require some upgrades, some structural enhancements. So in the interim, we were able to get a structural analysis done of it. Best-case scenario came forward for us, where the, we've worked with some of the people that we've been talking to about our radio system. We suspected it could have been anywhere from fifty thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for structural enhancements. The good news is it's structurally sound. No enhancements need to be made. Thus, there's no additional funds that need to be put towards the structure itself for the antenna site. So that, our big fear was that we might have another two hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tag for our radio system just for the antenna structure itself. That is not the case.
Thank you.
I hope that clears that.
Yes, that helps. Then if we had that in this, it would be a bigger chunk. Are there more comments, questions? Are we prepared to vote? Yes? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on CIP seven F, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aubrey, Parker, abstentions? No abstentions, so seven in favor, two opposed, and zero, so that carried. So now we are on to CIP seven G, Public Safety Radio Upgrade Replacement. This is Counselor Franco.
Okay. I make a motion for Public Safety Radio Upgrade Replacement of a million dollars.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Moravsek.
Again, the, the second slide I have is to give you an illustration of this. Our radio system is, is over twenty-five years old. It's an eight-hundred megahertz radio system. When it was put in place, it was state-of-the-art. Some of you may have heard this, this speech when, when you came to the police department last week, or last month, but it has degraded to the point where it is no longer a safe system. I can't put it any other way. Our officers have concerns with that on patrol. There are dead spots. It has resulted in some investigations we've had to do internally to look at some, some reasons why things happen. There are vulnerabilities with it. Last year, when the president visited, our system suffered what I would characterize as catastrophic failure. So myself, the captain, the deputy chief, were all running around Groton where we had officers on traffic posts to give them verbal directions as to what they needed to do because our system had failed. I've, I've been approached as to why is this so important? It's because it's about public safety and about officer safety. In the left-hand column on the top left of what I gave you, it goes over a little bit of that, gives you the fact that we've received estimates since my, my start as, as your police chief, between two and a half and three and a half million dollars for a radio system. We've looked at repairing this. Again, unfortunately, this is old technology. Parts aren't available. It's, we can keep making Band-Aid approaches to fixing it, but it's, it's just that it's a Band-Aid approach. It's never going to enhance the coverage, which is already suffering for our officers. We've looked at a couple of options, a regional system, a state system, and a standalone system. I know the question will come up, can, can, can other agencies use this? Yes. The one that I have in front of me, which is one of the proposals I've received, is a system that we would not own. It would be owned by the state of Connecticut, so it certainly would be available to both Groton Long Point and Groton City. Again, I'm careful not to speak for my counterparts, but I, since, since I'm constantly asked that question, what's it going to do? They have every opportunity to get onto it. It will cover them just as good as us. Groton Long Point and Chief Nixon and I have talked about this because they're already on our radio system, so he needed to know, what do I have to do? Essentially, it's going to be to buy mobiles and portable radios. The last bullet, again, to reemphasize this, it's a significant public safety and officer safety issue. On the upper right-hand column, I've given you a cost comparison with other departments and towns that have gone through the same analysis. And you can see from those estimates, the costs from, from two thousand and seven to today are wide-ranging, from two-point-seven million dollars up to twelve million dollars for a similar radio system. I put a bullet there about Stonington, as you all know, and some of you had asked me, what about, what's going on in Stonington? One of the proposals I have, which seems to be the most viable option at this point, is the same exact option that they've taken advantage of, and that's using the state's, state police system. It's an infrastructure that already... police system. It's an infrastructure that already exists. There's an interest on the state to get on our tower site because it enhanced their coverage. I've been asked about grants. I have pursued grants with state, local, federal officials, including state representatives, people that are employees of the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection who administer grants, as well as some of our state legislators. Bottom-line is this, despite the rocks that I've turned over and the calls that I've made, there is no, there is no grant dollars out there to fully fund a system like that. What has happened in other communities is some people have been able to take advantage of grants for small parts. And when I say small parts, it's in the low tens of thousands of dollars, not for millions of dollars. I've really looked at it extensively, but some of the things I do want to point out is the system that we've got offers a state discount of $346,000 from their initial proposal. I think we'd be hard-pressed to find a similar grant in that amount of money. The other things that I want to point out, particularly with the, you know, we haven't signed any contracts with anybody, we haven't done anything like that. There are a couple of proposals that are still outstanding, but the one that I have in front of me is one from the state and Motorola. And that's essentially a $3 million system that they're offering to us for less than $1 million. And the reason for that is, that was bought on grants back in the late '90s, early 2000s. There is the need to allow municipalities to get on it. They have an interest because, again, we're going to enhance their coverage because we're going to be part of that system. Their towers already exist, so we would put a tower at our department, at, you know, on the antenna site that you referenced earlier, Mayor. There are towers in, going up in Stonington, there's one in Ledger, there's one in East Line, there's one in North Stonington. We'd be part of that system. So, we would be building off what already exists at a much-reduced cost. We're not going to be charged for subscriber fees, which are the mobile radios, the handheld radios, the in-car radios, which typically is a charge. The state is absorbing that cost. The state is also giving us access to the core, which is another very expensive proposition. So, I thought it was important to give you an example of what other cities and towns are paying. Even earlier today, I spoke with one of my counterparts who told me about the $4.4 million system he has, and I said, "Please talk to me about other funding sources." He says, "There aren't any. We've explored them, they don't exist." So, I know that, I know that there's an interest in trying to find funding elsewhere, and we will continue to pursue that, but at the end of the day, despite my best efforts, there are not, there are no large sums of money that we can garner from other people. Now, there may be small sums that help to augment parts of this, but I don't want to be, I don't want to come before you and say, "That's the avenue we should pursue," or give you a hopeful posture that we're going to get money from other sources. I just find it unrealistic. In the bottom slides, we have our current coverage map. If you look, I know it's kind of small and tough to see, but you see all that white. Those are areas that we have no coverage. There's blue and yellow shades and green shades where we have intermittent coverage or difficult coverage. And these are just mobile units. And what I mean by mobile, it's the police car radio, not the radio that the officer carries on their hip, the portable. This is the higher wattage mobile radio. So, as you can see from that map alone, there's a lot of areas in town that right now aren't being covered by our radio system. Also, if you look in the lower-right-hand part of that, by the Mystic River, there's a lot of areas in Mystic that aren't being covered by our radio system. So, the other points on that is, we have five towers that we maintain right now. We, there's, I have additional photos and information, if you care, I can certainly share it with you, but we have five towers we maintain. We're looking to go down to one tower. So, all those, all the stuff that goes into those tower sites for the police radio system, they'll be obsolete. We won't need to maintain it. We won't have to do anything with it. It only works really in Groton, in the Groton proper. There's no interoperability. What that means is, the only people we talk to are ourselves. There's no communication with outside entities. It's on our frequency. We talk to our officers, to our dispatch center, and really, that's about it. And there's no redundancy, meaning if we suffered a catastrophic failure again at the facility, or we needed for some reason to relocate, there's no place to relocate to. And it's 100% of our responsibility. We own it, hook, line, and sinker. It's all on us. The, on the right-hand side, bottom-right, is the proposed future coverage if we were to go with a different system. That's one tower. Again, your, our maintenance costs are going to be reduced because we're going from five to one, so we only have one tower site that we have to maintain. 100% coverage, as you can see, Groton is, this isn't the whole town of Groton, it's actually all of eastern Connecticut, and it's because it's built off the existing state police, Trupi, infrastructure. So, we would have mobile communication virtually everywhere in eastern Connecticut, not just in Groton. That's important because our officers do travel outside of town. If they, if someone picks up a subject who's in custody by another agency, it's happened several times in the last week. The other day, we had an officer have to go to Manchester to pick up an individual who we had a warrant for. They'd be able to communicate right with us. In fact, I know we have an officer here that a year ago, a little over a year ago, had to do that very thing where she picked up a prisoner at the state police barracks in Motville, and on the way back to our police station with the subject in custody, he went into a medical crisis to the point where she had to administer aid, pulling over on the side of the road and had no ability to communicate with anybody, and that was in Waterford. So, being able to communicate outside the town of Groton is extremely important. That interoperability means that we're able to talk to other agencies, including DEP, which is right over here with, you know, the parks that we have in town, Bluff Point, where DEP often has people that are either stranded or lost, and we'd provide assistance and go out on searches. We'd be able to talk direct to them. We're able to talk direct to the state police. We'll be able to talk direct to Stonington. We'll be able to talk directly to anybody else that's on the system, including other federal and state agencies, and anybody else who gets on it in the future. Works throughout the state of Connecticut, and it's redundant. What I mean by that is if for some reason we had a problem in our facility where our officers or dispatchers weren't able to use our radio system, they could relocate, or they could transfer communications to any of the other parts of the system that are in existence. They could dispatch out of Trupi and Motville, or Stonington, or Middletown, State Police Headquarters, or any of the other agencies that, or any of the towns, cities and towns, and state agencies that have dispatch centers. And more importantly, there's redundancy in the fact that we don't necessarily own the system, we're a tenant on it, where we will, we will be able to utilize other resources. Earlier today, we had an individual from the state, the Connecticut Telecommunication System, which is a division of the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection at our facility, looking at our uninterrupted power source. If we did have, if we did suffer some kind of issue here, like during a presidential visit, all the resources of the CTS system would be available to us, including their field personnel, who myself and the deputy chief have experience with from our prior, our prior department, where they would bring people out, they would serve us, be able to provide assistance. And I, I'm not speaking anecdotally, I'm speaking factually, because I was on the other side of that at some point, where those services were provided to other people in other agencies and other communities, and I experienced it that way. I think we're getting a very good deal, and again, if you look at the cost comparison, the fact that we're getting a, we've gotten a recommend, or a proposal for less than $1 million for a system that really should be costing two to three times that, I think it's a good deal. The other, but I will caution this. That figure that we've gotten, the proposal we got, is just for the radio system and getting on it. It doesn't include the mobile radios that we need, and it doesn't include the portable radios that we need. We have bought some over time, and I like to look at things as a refresh method, so we don't buy everything all at once, but we've bought some mobiles and portable radios that will work on this new system. But we still have a bulk of radios that are a bit antiquated, that will not work on this system, that will require replacement. And the other, the other part, not unlike the antenna, Mayor, that you talked about, is our uninterrupted power source. We've had extensive conversations. We need, that was a CIP previously. Unfortunately, enough money isn't there to upgrade it. You know, we would need to make some improvements to that as well, and potentially either upgrade that or purchase another one to sustain this or any other system we have, and those are, those could be an expensive proposition too. So, I just want to caution the council that, yeah, I definitely hope you vote for this. I know our officers do, because it's certainly an officer safety issue with them, and they, you know, they brought it to my attention. We're on the same sheet of music. In fact, I know it's a concern with the union as well. But, that's kind of, sorry to kind of throw a lot of information out, but I wanted to make sure I gave it to you soup to nuts and addressed anything that you might have questions on.
That's good for everybody out. We're kind of down in the trenches with all of this, but everybody else listening out there is probably the first time they're hearing it, so it's good that you did go through it. Counsel Parker?
So, currently, it says in here you have 35 new portable radios. How many more radios would be needed?
We would have to buy probably six more, 16 more mobile radios, and approximately 30 more portable radios. So, we have, we've purchased some over time. Again, we've used existing funds, and we used a capital improvement project from a couple of years ago that we were able to repurpose with the council's consent, from doing a study to doing an actual purchase of equipment that we needed. And we did that with the vision that eventually we would need to go to something, and we didn't want to buy something that was incompatible, so we bought something that was backwards compatible. We bought new radios that worked on this system, but also worked on the new system. Unfortunately, that doesn't work in reverse. The old technology doesn't work on the new system.
And to, did you say there won't be a cost, a fee? You said there will be a fee for this?
We will need to pay maintenance, but what we will not have to pay is the core fee, which is the brains, you know, everything. Radios now are all, are all computer-based, it's all technology. There's a, if you, if we bought our own, we'd have to buy the core, which is a lot of money. The state has that in Rocky Hill, we don't have to pay a fee to use that. And we don't have to pay subscriber fees, which is an annual maintenance cost for the handheld radios and the mobile radios. The state, because it's a state system, and because, really, they, through their acknowledgement, they need to let municipalities on this, and they're trying to do that, and the whole focus of the state police buying this was interoperability at the time. This is interoperability, and I, you know, got to say it publicly too, I've worked very closely with Chiefs, Chief Stewart in Stonington. He's the, Stonington is the first department in the state fully getting on this system. We've certainly consulted and discussed this at length, so compliments to him and his staff for kind of leading the charge on it.
So, the state is bringing municipalities on a little bit at a time. If we would hold off on this, is there a chance that we would not be able to get into the state system?
I think that it would, it would move us out of where we are now. They're working in Stonington now. We had, we had people from Motorola and the state at our building today looking at some stuff, and I asked that very question to them, and they, the answer was yes. I mean, they're prepared to move forward now. They're, they've got, they've got their subcontractors in place already in the town of Stonington. It would certainly be a lot more feasible for them to move across the Mystic River into Groton to do this, but I know there are large municipalities in the state of Connecticut that are, that are lining up to do this. I have that on good authority. I've talked to some of my counterparts that want to take advantage of this as well. So, it is conceivable that the longer we wait, the longer it will take to get onboard this system. My message to you is, we didn't, we don't need this now, we needed it yesterday.
Mr. Burt?
If this was approved in the, for the new budget, how long would it take, do you think, to have the system up and running?
If, I, I use that hypothetical today with one of the persons from Motorola, and he said, "If you had in this, take this the way it was intended," I said, "If we, if we were to tell you today we wanted to purchase this system," he said, "If you had a purchase order, by the end of, the end of this month, end of April, we'd be building in May." He said, "They put their stuff together, we would actually be moving that fast." And it eventually, he said, "What is it from start to finish, from the time you begin to the time you end?" He said, "Roughly four to six months." So, were we to start this, I would expect that it would happen rather quickly.
How much do you think it would be for the UPS and the remaining radios? Do you have an estimate?
The radios would probably be another $150,000 to replace what we've got, and that's, that's a, that's a rough estimate. So, if we took all of this in context, and then the UPS, there is money already allocated for the UPS. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear to be enough for the UPS upgrade that they originally intended when that CIP was put together. The, I believe, and these are, I don't, I don't know if Gary's still here, but originally, there was $100,000 allocated for the UPS. The estimate that, when it went out for proposal, it came back at $170,000. So, that $100,000 is, my understanding is still sitting there, so we would probably need additional monies to do that project. And the, and the proposal that I got from Motorola is roughly around $800,000. Again, you know, I, I don't like to, I, I understand that we're in tough fiscal times, and we want to make sure that we're not paying for stuff we don't need, but I would hate to be in the position where we can't do something because we're, you know, we've got 25 cents added to it, and it costs 30, so we can't, you know, there's, I've also had conversations as early as this afternoon, or as recently as this afternoon, with the person who forwarded this proposal to me to talk about spreading those payments out over time, and he indicated, yes, that's possible. I would defer to the finance director and her staff as far as how we would execute that, but this proposal is on state contract, meaning there's pricing that's attached to state contract that would prevent us or eliminate the need for us to go out to bid. But, you know, there are other costs pop up, so I just, you know, when I budget for things, I don't budget for less than I need. I usually try and budget for more, then I feel better when I have money left over.
Mr. Schneider is here, and he's raising his hand, but I don't know that they'll be able to hear you.
Under UPS, we need another $106,000 for the project, because that's been based on December 29th of 2017.
I'm sorry. So, the original, what was the original? $100,000 we did, and then, so that's $206,000 for UPS?
Approving this FY16 capital program was $110,000. The total price of the project was $203,000, so we need approximately $106,000.
And what is the UPS ticket, please?
It's, that's the uninterrupted power source. Basically, what we need is, and it doesn't just service the radio system, by the way, it services the fire radio system, and it services our facility. And that, that means if we lost power in the building, before the generator kicked on, there has to be some continuity that kicks in. It's really a bunch of batteries, so it maintains that continuity.
Counsel Barker?
And 911 is also a component of that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Say that amount again, because it's going to cost $203,000?
Right.
We already had $110 from 16.
Right. We, there's some A and E fees that we spent, right? This is, we had to design the project and place it out in Britain, so there's some fees spent to a.
Okay. I just want to clarify for the public, because trying to add that up does not add up. Hence why I'm asking additional questions.
So, then, just if we're looking at this time-wise, if this were approved by the council, and we went ahead and did this, we would have people out there with radios that would not work on this system?
We would have to buy the radios too.
So, the radios, so then, so why aren't the radios and the CIP as well? If we're going to put this in, and we're going to put this system in, maybe I misunderstand.
If it comes out at the $800,000, you'll be just short $56,000 for everything, then, it looks like. And we are still working on some grants, and that's a more manageable number.
I, I don't dispute with the, I, there's additional costs that need to be considered.
And what I would propose too is that we, with the CAD system, that we delay that just a little bit during the year, just to make sure our costs are coming out okay, because we could always revisit that to see if we need to steal a bit from that and put that off for the year. But hopefully, everything will go smoothly, and we'll figure out, we could easily figure out the $56,000 out of existing other CIP funds. That's not, if grants don't cover it, so.
So, we're thinking then it's going to come in less than the million?
$800,000 is the estimate?
That, the estimate that I have in front of me is for $810,000.
Okay.
And that is, that, but that, again, that does not include any electrical work that could conceivably have to be done. Doesn't include the universal power source or uninterrupted, uninterrupted power source, and it doesn't include the remaining mobiles and portables that we need to buy.
So, then, Mr. Burt, you're confident that if we approve the amount that you put into the CIP for this, if we went ahead and said, "Do this," that we would be able to find the money to bring all the radios onboard as well?
What would be a jeopardy is, let's say we ran into electrical issues, other things, and we had to revisit the CAD. That could push the CAD, you know, it might take some of the funding from the CAD and push it to next year, but hopefully that wouldn't happen. And we, we can see what we sweep out of the, out of the CIPs this year too. I mean, one way or another, I think the radio system's safe. It's just, would we have to revisit the CAD would be the question. Hopefully, everything goes well, but you, like you said, you got to be conservative, and things happen.
So, we would defer then the CAD RMS, and then?
If we had to. Hopefully, that wouldn't be the case.
Supplemental or something to get the rest of the radios? Ms. Landry?
Worst-case scenario, if, if we ran to issues and it went over, then we'd come back to, say, we're running over, this is $100,000 over what we planned. We'd like to delay the CAD system to next year, take $100,000 out of that CIP, leaving the remaining 300 or 220, and then we'll fill in the gap next year, if we had to. I mean, preferred enough to just, let's put, you know, have all the money upfront.
Right.
You know, that'd be obviously preferred.
And can we use the money from the CAD for something else?
If the council approves it, you can reauthorize the funding to transfer from one project to another.
All right. I've asked a lot of questions. I apologize. Anybody else?
No other questions?
We argued about $12,000, but we're. No other questions. We argued about $12,000, but we're at like a million. We're ready to go. Is that right, Councilor Franco?
All right. So I saw your map and there's areas that what you currently have is not covering. So the proposed one is going to cover throughout southeastern Connecticut. So if you're, let's just say, on a chase, you have surrounding towns in the chase with you, you can talk to all of them as well.
If they're, we'd be able to talk to the state police all over the state. We'd be able to talk to, yeah, the answer is yes. And we work very closely with Stonington Police. The, the way they're going to, there's 12 channels or, it's a trunk system and, and I've learned more about radios in the last two years, two-plus years than I, you know, I used to be the guy that'd pick up the radio and press the button and it'd work and you would learn a lot of it. But it's, it's a trunk system, which means there's all these different people talking on the same thing and it chooses a channel for the work on. So we would have our own dedicated channels, so to speak, 12 of them, for our department because it's a 12-channel system. We'd be able to switch conceivably to whatever, whether it's Stonington, Stonington has something going on, we just go to their frequency, or they come to ours, or we, we set up a talk room for us to talk to them all the time. Because we, you know, we share Mystic, so we're constantly interacting with Stonington officers and getting into maybe a chase, you know, hopefully not. But if we need to communicate with other people, we'd be able to do that. We'd be able to radio directly to them, car-to-car, mobile-to-mobile. We don't do that, we don't do that even here now. You know, we, we have purchased radios using existing funds before where we're able to talk on different frequencies to different agencies. But those are very expensive radios. In this system, we would buy the basic radio where we could talk one-to-one instead of having to go on those different frequencies. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, you got a little technical there, but yeah.
Okay.
I gotcha.
I'm trying to dumb this down to my level so people can understand it then.
Councilors of Perry?
We've heard a lot of compelling reasons for making this change in the radio system. The most compelling to me is, is officer safety. Your officers are at risk by nature of the work they do. But if there's anything we can do to reduce that risk, I think we should. And for that reason, I think we have to go the extra mile and, and implement this system.
Anything else? Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on CIP 7G, the amount of $1 million. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So eight, eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Parker abstains. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are on to CIP 7Q, library and GMT servers on page 231. Thank you, gentlemen. This is Councilor Heath.
I will make a motion for $49,000.
Moved by Heath. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Good evening.
Hi. So this project requests the funding to purchase one server that will replace the two servers that currently are used to basically run GMTV. The servers that we are using now are, one is seven years old, one is 11 years old. The expected life for a server is seven. So we are doing this to, basically to keep the station running. If, if one of those servers goes down, GMTV would be off the air for, you know, a couple of weeks until we were, and we would have to come to you for funding because we, we obviously don't have this kind of money. So this is sort of a preventative maintenance to make sure that the station is maintained.
And we have the man behind the curtain with us this evening.
Yep, I actually made it out behind the curtain.
This is the expert. So I brought him out for the real questions. He's, he's going to have to help me out with that.
Thank you.
Yeah. What we're really looking to do is, we basically have two servers. We're actually looking to consolidate to one server. That is an Internet Protocol server. It will give us much more flexibility. It will give us the ability to do backup files, which we really don't have that capability right now because of storage space. As you know, we take very long meetings. They take up a lot of file space. Don't know why, but they do. And, you know, basically, this, the servers are the heart of GMTV. If you come into our control room, I will show you a rack and I'll say, there's GMTV. And it's, really, we, the demand of what we're doing is so far different than what it was 12 years ago, 11 years ago, when we first started setting up our servers. Back then, we only went out to one cable system. Now we go out to three and we go out to YouTube Live as well. So we're, we're putting out to four different sources. We're also running, running digital signage. So the signage that you see in the library and over at the senior center are run through the same servers. When we have multiple meetings and this time of year, we, we have lots of meetings, including the city. Sometimes you guys meet on the same night. Sometimes the RTM does as well. We have to have a, a second server to record that meeting so that we can broadcast it at a later time, usually right after whatever meeting's airing live. This server will actually be able to do all of that and quite a bit more. And it will give us what we really lack right now is the ability to do automatic backup of files too. So this is really an essential piece of equipment for, for us. And we're trying to do it in a very controlled way instead of waiting till we go black. So.
Are there questions on 7Q? Councilors of Perry?
I understand you have two servers, but the system cannot run with just one of them. If one goes down, the whole system's
Not really, no, no. I mean, we can limp along a little bit, but, you know, at this time of year, the two are very crucial, very, very crucial at this time of year. There are times of years, yes, we, we could, we could try to limp along with one. But at this time of year, it'd be very difficult because of the amount of meetings that, that we cover. And, and really, the, the second server, you know, one of them is, is 11 years old. It absolutely owes us nothing. It's been sent in a, a couple of times when we, we had the chance to do that. And they really don't support that one anymore. So it'd be a little bit of a crapshoot as far as which server goes down. So if you ask me the question, can we? Yeah, if the right server goes down. If the wrong server goes down, we'll be black.
Councilor Heath?
All right. Let's see. So this is the library and GMT server. Are you also here to talk about the AV presentation on the next one?
Yes, yes.
Of the two, which one is more critical?
This one. I mean, we, this would mean that, you know, the station went down if we, if we lose one of these servers. So this one is more important, although we, I still would like to talk to you about part of the one that's coming up because there is a piece of that one that is sort of also
I only ask because it's good to prioritize and help us think about it. Thank you.
Any other? Councilor Atwater?
Would the new server last more than seven years? Life expectancy?
I, I would hope so, but, you know, technology today, you know, it, it really depends on what's going to be happening. But I, one of the other things that our current servers don't do is that we have no flexibility for, for moving forward into future formats like HD. Everything, as you know, is, is going toward HD. We have no ability to scale with the current setup that we have right now. This is scalable so that if, say, you know, Comcast and TBC were still standard definition and Frontier allowed us to come in with an HD signal. YouTube already allows that, but we can't really do that with our current system. We would be able to send two different signals. We could send a standard definition to one source or a couple of sources and send HD to another. So there's a lot more scalability with that.
Is this the same server that does the work for the Board of Ed as well? Or do they have separate ones for their program?
They, they have a separate one. They have a completely different setup for Channel 19.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we vote on CIP 7Q for $49,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously. And we are on to 7R on page 232. Councilor Obray?
Town meeting room, I guess we just need the number, don't we? $24,000 for town meeting improvements, town meeting room improvements.
Second. Moved by Obray, seconded by Parker.
What's the important part?
Okay, well, this is a multi-year project, looking at meeting rooms across the town. So this isn't really a library project. It's, it's our project because Sean is really the expert in town on the types of equipment that we would be looking at in all the rooms. So the, the first year, there's just some funding in there to provide some planning for how to fix this room so that you can, for example, see presentations better when people come in and do a PowerPoint or something and, and to make this a more accessible room for your meetings. But what I was going to say is, the important part is, in this first year, we're also looking for $18,000 for wireless microphones. The FCC has sold off frequencies for, over the last several years because of all the cell phones and all the other types of things that need those frequencies. And our microphones are now in that range that has been sold off. And so in, within the course of the next year, they are going to become obsolete. We're not going to be able to use those microphones. So they, they do need to be replaced.
You know, a lot of the microphones in town were bought maybe 15 years ago. So we, we've really gotten a, a great life out of them. You know, they've, some have had a rougher life than others. But a lot of ours are in the 600 frequency band and that is the one that's being targeted to be shut down no later than, I believe, July of 2020 because it'll start interfering with different, I think, I think in this area, it might be T-Mobile that, that would be in this area. And to be honest with you, if there's a strong enough signal in this area, it'll just cut out your microphone completely. So by law, we will be required to shut that down. They actually may do that sooner. I'm not doubt, I'm kind of hesitant about sooner, but I think they're pretty serious about the 2020 because they, they have pushed that date off a few times. They've already sold off one bandwidth and shut it down completely. But most of our microphones are in the 600. We run about 25 different wireless microphone systems around town, here, the library, Senior Center, Parks and Rec. So there's quite a few of them around. They're pretty standardized. They're mostly the Sennheiser brand. They've been very, very good to us. You know, and we're looking at a cost of about 650 a pair. And that comes up to about, about $18,000 plus. There's some peripheral equipment. When you stack in a bunch of microphones, you need a common antenna. So you have 20 sets of antennas setting it up. It, it runs off of one power source and one. So there's a few pieces that have to go into a few different places. Thus, the cost is about $18,000. So that, that is the important part. As far as the, the, the meeting room equipment, as you know, this room is used for multiple uses and different types of meetings. Some meetings, it's very standard. You're up there, there's one microphone or two down here. Other times, you're all meeting down here. Presentations are over there. Sometimes they're used for video conferences during the, the day. And it's a really kind of an odd little room. And we do television work in here as well. So there's a lot going on in this room. And, and I know there's, there are times where you all have a hard time seeing the presentations. The people in the audience have a hard time seeing the presentation. And what it comes down to is how efficiently your, your business is getting done and how you're understanding what's being presented if you can't really see it or hear it. And so that is really, was my driving factor of pushing for these CIPs. And the other factor is that there's so many different types of systems in town. There's nothing standardized. And this is a, a plan to have, a, a plan to go out throughout the town and try and make things more standardized. So if you're having a meeting here, it's going to be pretty similar to something that's going to happen maybe at the senior center or in another room at the annex here. So it's not going to be too far different and it's going to improve the way you communicate with public and how people communicate with you, the, the business that they have for you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilors of Perry?
Do I understand correctly that the requirement change is going to occur in 2020?
No later than July of 2020.
And may it come earlier?
It's possible. There, I've been reading lately that because there's been more and more need, the, the increased demand for bandwidth is huge right now. And they, they are talking about, excuse me, about pushing that date up a little bit. So if they do, I don't know. So basically, once that date gets pushed up and they shut us down, these mics are off.
Councilor Franco?
Are there any grants or any type of funding you can find?
We are constantly looking for grants. I have not seen a grant that would fit for this particular use at this time. So I, you know, I'm always on the look for grants. We've gotten quite a few things through grants. We've recently replaced our LED lighting in studio. But, you know, we're, we're always looking. I haven't seen anything at this point.
And so the FCC is changing their rules to make you have this different frequency?
It's already, it's already been changed.
Okay, so it's
They've, they've sold the bandwidth.
So are these microphones going to have to change?
No, those are wired mics.
So the ones that sit at the table?
Sit at table. The RTMs mics, the microphones in the studio, the library in their, their meeting rooms. Parks and Rec has some. So there's, there's quite a few of them around town, especially at the RTM.
And, and you stated how many? I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
Twenty-five, I believe.
Twenty-five total?
Yeah. And with, with a couple of peripheral pieces that have to go with it, especially when you stack in about 10 of them into, into one spot.
Okay.
And we will be looking at pricing. Sean has mentioned that it looks like there may be rebates from the companies because they know this is coming. And so, you know, there may be some advantage to holding off just a little bit this year until it gets a little bit closer to the date when the bandwidth, you know, when, when it's gone because the companies know that people need to replace these microphones.
Councilor Heath and then to Perry.
I know we're talking about this year, but could you maybe briefly talk about what's over the next couple of years?
As, as far as the, the plan for meeting rooms?
How does it flow?
So, so really, the, the way the, the plan would work is to, to really plan out a year ahead. So in the first year, this being the most complicated room and there might be a few other issues. First thing is that we would definitely be meeting with the, the owners of the building. So in here, we'd be meeting with Gary and his staff to find out what they would like to see in their building and how they want, would like to see it used. And then combine it with the other uses that actually happen here as well for, for town business. So that, that would be a standard thing going out throughout the plan. And then we would meet with a consultant to, because this room's going to be a little bit more complicated. There's, there's a few different challenges here. You know, your desks have zero electricity and it, it would be difficult to get it there. There's also wireless issues that we would want to look at and what would maybe incorporate better with the IT system that we have set up here. And then there's the displays and the, the number of ways that we can do that. And there's all sorts of new technology out there that's available. And I want to make sure that we got the best technology that would last this longest period of time. So we wouldn't have to keep redoing this year after year. So we would work on a couple, a few rooms at a time. So the first year would be here, the, the other two meeting rooms here, a couple of small conference rooms up the, the town hall so that they may be able to do some video conferencing and small presentations in those rooms. Right now, they have no capability of doing that at all if they walk into the Town Managers Conference Room or, or into the Finance Conference Room or the HR Conference Room. And then we, we would push out the next year, it would be, I believe it's the Senior Center and, and then a couple of other rooms. And we would do the same thing. So as we're working on this room, and actually after the plan's done, the second year, that would happen here and we would start planning for the following year. So it would be basically plan, do, do a set of rooms, plan the next year, and then do another set of rooms. So we'd always be kind of flexing all the way down until the end where we're just doing the work of finishing off the rooms. And I think the last year would be the, the police training room, Parks and Recreation offices. And, and so the plan's pretty clearly laid out in, in the description here. So it's just more of a leapfrog where we're actually planning and going.
Councilors of Perry?
I would move an amended amount for R7 or 7R of $18,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Perry, seconded by Moravsek. And would you, did you want to explain? You, you're not required to, but would you like to give a rationale?
Well, the rationale is that they have told us themselves that the $6,000 is not critical for this year and that the $18,000 to replace the microphones, the wireless microphones is. I, I think that we should replace the wireless microphones I think that we should replace the wireless microphones and leave the less critical portion to later time.
Any further discussion? Counsel Franko?
Can you wait till next year's budget on this?
For the microphones, you mean, or for the?
Microphones.
Be cutting it close.
It's a, you know, it's a chance. You know, if the bandwidth goes, we're left without any microphones.
And you're saying that's supposed to be like in 2020?
July of '20.
Or later than.
No later than July of '20.
So, next year's budget basically would go into effect in like July of '19?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion?
And 18,000, you think is sufficient? Or is it more than enough?
It should work, yes.
I'm all set. Sorry.
That's all right. I just didn't want to go again. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, so we'll vote on the first amended figure, which is the 18,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So, moved unanimously.
Thank you very much. I'm going back to my closet. By the way, thank you to Brian, who took over for me for a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, Mr. Burt, you had something?
Yeah, well, now, I think the point where the council should decide whether to look at the website redesign.
Okay. And that was?
Tab B, page 81.
Tab B. Page 81, you said, sir?
Yes.
Tab B and then what page?
81.
81, I'm sorry. Hello there.
Good evening.
And just to, as a little introduction, one of the things, the original council that hired me mentioned was that they wanted the website done. A couple, some of you have mentioned it when you came in. I get criticisms on our website all the time. You know, people are asking about it a lot. And Jerry is part of our IT Steering Committee. You know, it's just one of those, I wanted, I really wanted to do it, but we had so many things, you know, started with eight million on our list for general fund items and, you know, wrestled with it. But, IT Steering Committee feels strongly that this is needed, so they've asked to be able to address the council.
So, would anyone like to move a figure for this so we can discuss? Counsel Schmidt?
I will move a figure. Is it, what is the figure that we're looking at right?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Excuse me?
Fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Morawcik. Go ahead.
Well, I've heard the council ask a lot of people the questions. Is this essential? Is this, you know, necessary? Is it critical? I guess I would ask you the question. You know, is it critical for citizens to access information from the town effectively and easily and conveniently? Is it essential that people can get a building permit? Can they contact the right person at the police department? Can they find the video on the library's website? Can they find their Parks and Rec program? Can they contact the Town Council? Can they contact the Town Managers' Office? Where do we get that information and how do we get that information out? Most people today are starting on the internet. You know, I don't know the last time I opened a phone book. I honestly can't remember. So, if providing services to your citizens is important to you, then I'd say the website is a critical issue for us. The website is just another one of those things that's on the list of things that are going to die. The, I think, if I can quote our IT manager here, I think the website is now hosted on the only provider we can find that still services the technology that our website operates on. I mean, it's, it's.
Ancient.
Ancient, thank you. You know, ancient, I guess, is 20 years in the IT world. You know, that is ancient. So, if anybody has seen the new Explore More Groton website that the Planning Department has put out there, and you look at that, and then you flip pages, and you look at the town's website, and you try to find something on those two sites, it's a world of difference. If you look on your phone to try to look at the town's website, you'll have absolutely no luck. If you look at the Explore More Groton website, you will have a lot of luck. You know, it's just a matter of whether the council thinks this is an essential service for the town to be able to provide services to your citizens. So, beyond that, I guess, as I sit on an IT Steering Committee, and we need, right here in this room, and we talk about things that we could do better, you know, we just look at each other and talk about our website and how it's frustrating us, and we can't communicate the information we need to communicate effectively. So, I don't know what else I can give you, but I can answer any questions you might have. But, the IT Steering Committee, made up of professionals in this town, wholeheartedly agrees that this is a priority that they would like to see, and that would allow them to do their jobs better.
So, I'm going to start the questions. A new website won't do you any good if you don't have the staff to maintain it properly. So, are there going to be any different requirements for the new website than you currently have for the old website? And is this, I know the staff is thin in IT as it is, so is this going to just further burden things, or will this actually make it easier?
I think the answer to that question would be that the ability to update the website would be much easier. Right now, there are just a handful of people in the town who have any kind of web knowledge at all, and it's really heavily intensive into actual HTML coding and things like that. I didn't go to school learning how to, you know, code HTML. I went to school to provide Parks and Rec programs. But, I'm the department's webmaster, and it's somebody, I'm doing something I haven't been trained to do, and other departments are like that as well. The new software allows people, it's, you know, if you've ever heard WYSIWYG, you know, you edit on a screen and you make it look like you want it to look, and that's what it looks like on the website. Right now, that's not how we do things. You code, you know, you type words and carrots and symbols to try to make it do that, and that's a different thing.
Mr. Burt, Mr. Zepari, and Counsel Parker. He's not done. He's not done. Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, it would probably take a burden off the IT department because it'd be pushed out to the department levels. They would be able to post a lot of their own stuff on these webpages with the content management system that would be associated with it.
And that's what I was going to mention, where I had upgraded my website at my previous location so that departments could have it and lock it down. IT obviously has access to the whole thing. You know, certain people have access only to their division of it, but if there's a mistake on the agenda, I could, you know, quickly get it out there, no delay, no waiting for IT. So, it's much better to have.
So, we have Zepari, Parker, and Heed.
Is there any reason why the town can't use the Explore Groton website? The same software?
Yeah.
Never really looked into it.
I think the idea, the way that the Explore More Groton website is made is with a WordPress-type application where somebody is actually doing that work. That is exactly what we would like to do for the rest of the town.
Well, it sounds like the town of Groton already has that software because the Planning Department is using it.
We would still have the contract to bring ourselves in, being a different domain. We have multiple domains. We have the towns, we have the Parks and Rec, we have the libraries, and to bring all the content management in with the storage. There would be an added cost to that.
Parks and Rec aren't a part of the town? Is that what you're saying?
We are, they are a part of the town, yes. But, they have a different domain they go to. That'd be added to all this. We have had estimates done earlier to bring in a content management. We actually had contacted a college to see if we could get a student to do it. Hey, we were looking for every route. And they, we actually chased them away because they said the cost would be about 70,000 for them to do it.
So, I think we would be using the same tools, but there's a lot of information that has to be organized and put into, like Brian's saying, a content management system that allows us to use that software like they're using in the Planning Department. It would be, we would, the staff members would be using the same types of tools to do it, but getting the information into a place where you can use it and it's accessible to that software to be able to edit it is what we're talking about.
I'm just wondering, you have multiple domains. That means domains being names of?
Correct. Grotonrec URLs.
What if we had one domain and then branching within the domain to the various departments?
Yes.
Then, we wouldn't have to pay for the software for however many departments we have.
I think, just to make sure, we're not, we're paying for the content management and organizing the information. The software that you buy to do, you know, WordPress, I think we already have that, but we don't have the content to put into WordPress to make it work, if that makes sense to you.
So, now, you're talking about hiring someone to actually create the content?
Initially, right. Initially, yes. And then, the town maintains it.
That would be the?
And then, town staff maintain.
So, the $50,000 you want is to hire someone to develop the website on software that we already have?
That we can maintain.
That we can maintain and bring all the stuff over.
Mr. Burt wants in here.
I was just going to reiterate, there's a lot of decision-making, a lot that goes into upgrading a website. I've actually gone through it twice. I've led the whole process myself. And there's going to be little things besides just getting all that data converted and putting it in the right format. It's very time-consuming. Plus, you're going to come up with special tools on certain sites, like building inspections to build, look up certain things. You're going to modify all kinds of things to make it more user-friendly for the public. There's a lot that goes into it.
I've also had some experience with this, if I may say so, and there are a lot of thieves in that domain of developing websites for you.
Well, we won't hire them. Counsel Parker and then Counsel Heed.
All right. So, you're saying that the Explore More Groton, Explore Groton section is a Word? Say that again? A Word?
WordPress.
WordPress. Which is a company, part of a company, correct? They can't do the CMS?
It's a platform.
It's a platform, thank you.
It's a software.
Software.
So, I believe, didn't we hire a firm that created that? I don't know if it was Quinn &amp; Harry or?
Golden Shovel, I think it was.
Thank you. That's where I was going with that. Thank you. So, they can't do it even though there's so many domains that we have?
Well, I would contact them to see what it would take to get us onto that if we had some funding.
You still have similar costs, no matter which way you go.
Well, yeah, we still have a cost, but I'm just trying to figure out what other avenues we explore.
I don't know exactly what the EDC, Economic Development, spent on their webpage.
But, would it be?
Yeah. So.
Go ahead. What?
Never mind.
Do you have more?
Are you talking about putting it all in one?
Why not? Because it wouldn't make sense if we're changing the outlook and the logos and everything so that they all looked the same? So, you're going to have it as a separate thing?
Want to take this?
So, keep the, I mean, we want same domain for the town site, so.
Yes.
But, could they do it? I mean, whatever we do, it'd be nice to have it matching with the new logos and the new colors and all that. And maybe the same company can do it to make it seem like, you know, the same, but, you know, it's a different domain name and it would be a separate place.
Decision-making process.
Linked closely together.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Reiter?
I want to just say one thing about the domains. For example, the library and all of our publicity, we use.
I don't know if they're picking it up, if the man behind the curtain can hear you or not.
At the library, we use the address www.grotonpl.org so that people who, you know, are looking for the library will find it. But, we don't go to a separate website. It just redirects to the town website. So, it's not as if all these domains are separate websites. They all just are redirects to the town website so that people, you know, because otherwise, in all of our publicity, when we were directing people to the website, we would have to say town, or it would be groton-ct.gov slash library slash, you know, it would be a very long address. And so, we pay, you know, a very small amount every year to pay for that domain, grotonpl.org so that we can use that for our publicity purposes to get people to the website more easily.
Counsel Heed and then Franko.
Excitement is, you know, really great, and I understand what you're saying in terms of the current system, but I kind of feel like this is a nice-to-have, not a need-to-do right now. So, I would be opposing this.
Counsel Franko?
Although, I really do not like our website, really don't like it. I agree. I think this might have to wait a little while because we have a lot on the agenda right now. But, from what I have, just the EDC site, I don't think can be this all-in-one with the town. I think the purpose of that was, that's to market our company to developers, and they wanted that separate in the, what is that?
But, aren't we doing a site and everything's going to look the same?
It can look the same, but it's going to be, I think it has to be a separate website because that one's just to go to developers and trying to get them to come to our town and market it. But, I would like it to look the same because I think that site looks very nice as well.
Counsel Morawcik and then Counsel O'Bree and Atwater.
I think you guys are just looking for the money, not how to do it. We don't want to micromanage you. And I think you're doing a wonderful job, and your idea about upgrading the town website is wonderful. I think that's a need that the town has. It's going to bring everybody to the town, various sites. It'll help maybe sell this town with, you know, with all of the services that it provides. You guys are the ones that have to determine what goes into it and how it has to be. We're not going to micromanage it, and I think you need just the money for this. And I think, I can support this.
Counsel O'Bree?
Well, I think it's something that needs to be done. I'm wondering if maybe we could work on it if we were to, if I was to move a number of 25,000 and 25,000, 25,000 this year, 25,000 next year, so we could at least begin to work on it. Because I would give you all of it because I know how important this is. If you go to other towns and look at their websites, they are phenomenal, and ours is really way behind. The only one that really has caught up is EDC. And we need to have the entire town looking that good. And so, I'd like to move 25,000 for this year and put a notation for 25 for next year.
So, the first amended figure is 25,000 from O'Bree. Is there a second? Second. Seconded by Franko. Did you need to say anything else because Counsel Atwater also wanted to speak?
Is that a possibility?
I would actually have to check into that, but it's a good start.
I'll try to stay alive and get you there if I can.
Well, we do, like Jerry said, this is the last ASP that will support us with our classic ASP software. We haven't seen anybody else out there. And there is a 2020 drop-dead date for Silverlight being dropped by all the popular browsers out there. Right now, we're down to Explorer. That's pretty much the only one that works with us right now.
So, do you feel that you can do something with this, or am I not helping by getting half this year if I get the votes?
I think if, you may be in a situation where certain departments get upgraded and other departments don't. Your website might look two different ways. You might have webpages that look good and webpages that don't look good. And if that's okay, then that's okay. So, you're asking us the question, but it's your decision. I can't answer that for you. I would suggest, you know, just, I don't know. For me, if I was going to do the project, I would do the project right. That's the only thing I would recommend. If you would like to do something else, we're here to respond to the, in the best way we can to whatever you decide.
Well, we didn't have any money for it for this year, right?
Correct.
Correct. So, if we can work with you a little bit, I don't really care about what public work looks like, but I do care about what it looks like.
Counsel Atwater?
Just kidding.
I'd just like to say that I support the 50,000. We've already cut 300,000 from the CIP so far tonight. But, I think that my real reason is that we talk about a TIF, we talk about EB hiring, we talk about all the improvements we want for the town and so forth, and what's the we talk about all the improvements we want for the town and so forth, and what's the big thing we talk about? It's the millennials, the millennials. Well, the millennials want an up-to-date website. They don't want something that's as ancient as ours. So I would support the 50.
So, Mr. Burt.
Can I just add on to that? My understanding too, though, is like, from my own experiences, it's also good for the elder population, I don't know if that's the right term, but, because it'll adjust the font sizes and help them see the websites better, so it's all, it's for all ages.
I just had a question about when, we have some pretty complicated things on our website, including the GIS system. So that will just redirect to whatever site we have? I mean, do we, do we have to be concerned with that? That's, because that's not maintained within the site itself, correct?
Yeah, that's outside the site. That's actually being worked on as we speak. I have my agenda working, trying to bring that up.
Is that the Silverlight issue with the full version of GIS? Right now, we can only run the full version on the Internet Explorer because of that Silverlight light issue.
Could you make it a little easier to get to it?
Councilors Zepary and then Heath.
I, I'd get to the website on Firefox.
The ESL?
I'm sorry?
The ESL version?
I don't know which version is, but I, if I look for the website on Firefox, I'd get to it.
We just found that out. It's a different version you gotta go on, yes.
Yeah. I'm under the impression that this website is in imminent danger of failing because there are, there's only one ISP that'll support it.
Correct.
And, and, and you're having difficulties with different web browsers getting to it. So we sort of have a pressing need to correct the problem. I'm also concerned that you asked for $50,000. It's a very round number. Do we have a more precise number? Can you tell us why it's 50 and not 40 and not 41?
I think I originally questioned 70. I think that's just a ballpark figure. We started with 70, down there, and then cut it back to 20.
After discussions.
After discussions, yes. Not just randomly, I'm sorry.
And then I took it out all the way after cutting it to 50.
Yeah. Moved it out. So, yeah.
And I think part of it is, there's lots of these, you know, you see it and you think, oh, wow, I wish we would've already done some bidding on that, but you start with $8 million in projects, you can't bet everything out and get an exact number. You got it ballpark until you know whether, because you can't spend the time on all that. You gotta get something going and then bet it out, so.
I hate to find myself agreeing with Mr. Atwater, but I, I think I do. I think this is something we need to do, and we have to communicate with the people in the town and the people who are interested in the town. And you mentioned that people looking for permits are going to the website for them. All of these are important functions. I think we have to support it.
Councilor Heath.
I would support this in full next year. I just, I still think we moved a lot of money tonight for things that were critical and that this can wait a year.
Any further discussion? So we have two figures on the floor. We'll be voting on the amended figure of 25,000 first. All those in favor of 25,000, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, so that failed. One in favor, eight opposed, zero abstentions. So then we're back to the fir-, the main motion, which is the $50,000 for 7J website redesign. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I would just like to let the council know that it's not even quite 300,000 because it's 243 out of 3 million we've cut. It's Simon and Phil three, because the water services were not cut, they're postponed till tomorrow. So we're at 243. We cut.
Councilor Parker?
I think we should go back to the 25.
I think, I don't know if she has something to say or not. Did you have something you wanted to add, Councilor Parker?
Director Landry, would have, if I'm looking at everything correctly, I think it's, my number's 342, and that's not including tomorrow as a number that we postponed for tomorrow night.
Are you talking about redraft?
We have 140 from 6M. We have 97,000 from 7A, 6,000 from 7R. We didn't act on the education services of 50,000.
And we took out the, we zeroed out the 105. Well, which is not part of-
That's not part of the capital reserve fund. That was fundraising.
Okay.
So it wouldn't impact the capital reserve fund projects.
Okay.
Councilor Morosik, do you have?
No, you do.
All right. I thought you signaled. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on $50,000 for website redesign. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? So it passes 7 to 2 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now back to the normal order, which is 9A on page 233. And Mr. Schneider is back for Energy Efficiency and Conservation Natural Gas Conversions. And this is, I don't remember where we left off. You'll take it. Thank you, Councilor Atwater.
I move under 9, Energy Efficiency and Conservation, 7, Natural Gas Conversions, $400,000.
Second. Moved by Atwater, seconded by Parker.
Okay, this says, this is our heating oil tank at the highway garage. Again, this is another tank that has to be removed by April 2019. The existing steam boiler is also approaching its end of life, and the terminal equipment, meaning all the pumps, that pump the steam throughout the building are also beyond their service life. With the recent, with the recent installation of the natural gas line, main on Groton Longpoint Road, the replacement of the system with a high-efficiency gas-fired water system, water boiler, is advantageous. The result will be approximately a $4,000 reduction in annual fuel costs that we will realize with this project. So this is our highway garage. This is a, not a 24/7 building, but when the rubber meets the road, when the snow is on the road, this is where the guys live out of. This has also been built to a standard of a safe building, of a safe room. We have fortified the building with shutters, and we've actually secured the roof to the structure itself that it can withstand a category III hurricane. So in the event that something happens, town offices can move up to that building. It's kind of strange that we have a maintenance shop up there, but that is one of our only buildings that we have in town that will withstand a category III hurricane. The police station will not. So what we're proposing is, as we have to replace the tank, is to tie into the natural gas system, to tie into the natural gas system, we have to replace the boiler. So the whole project is to redo that whole system in the building. The boiler was replaced in 1990, it's on its last legs, but the steam part of the system's been, some portions have been in there since 1952 when the building was built. So we're proposing to do this. There's another little thing in there. Because the gas main was installed in front of the town hall annexed here for free by EverSource, we had to connect one building within five years. And I recommend that this is the building that we connect to the system, then we would honor the agreement. If not, we owe EverSource some money to install, for the installation of the gas main that was installed in the road in front of, in front of our structures here.
Are there any questions here, Mr. Schneider? Councilor Morosik, then Heath.
Gary, when EverSource did the analysis, the study, how much savings are we gonna have per year?
Our engineer and EverSource is saving in this, or that building, not this building, in that building, about $4,000 a year in heating savings compared to the price of heating oil.
Yeah.
Councilor Heath.
So as I, I read through this, Anderson, we had a few years before we have to convert to natural gas to match the contract, but now you're telling me, which I didn't read here, that the tank that's in there right now expires at the end of this year.
It has to be, it has to be popped, it has to be removed out of the, it has to be out of the ground, April 2019.
Which is in this fiscal year.
Correct.
So this is, we can't really not do this?
That's correct. Now, funds were provided last year to do, to do that preliminary engineering work on it so we could come up with an estimate. So this was, again, approved by the council and RTM the previous year to do the work to bring it up to this point.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on CIP 9A. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilors Zepary.
You're saying that we can achieve a $4,000 per year savings by switching to natural gas?
Correct.
And how much, how much will it cost to replace that tank?
The tank itself is just, is, is $100,000 to, to put an oil tank in back. It'd be, we have to remove the old tank, then put in an above-ground tank. But then that, if we ever was thinking of converting to natural gas, then you throw that $100,000 away. That tank is useless. It will go, there's not, there's not an aftermarket for those tanks.
But the conversion to, to natural gas is gonna save us $4,000 a year, and it's gonna cost $400,000.
Correct.
So that would mean it would take us 100 years to recover that investment.
Abs, if you just use that, but I have a boiler that's on its last legs up there. Once that goes down in the middle of winter, I have no maintenance facility for my shops. Now I bring in a portable boiler on a, on a semi, on a tractor trailer, and hooking it up because that is our only maintenance building.
What would it cost to replace the boiler?
While he's looking for that, I just wanted to say, unless I misunderstood, we have an oil tank that we need to get out of the ground, and that's what's costing the 400,000. It has nothing to do with tying into the natural gas line.
It's $100,000 to, to remove the tank and to put another tank there. The whole project, which is the boilers. So we're going from steam to, to water, hot water, so it's all the circulating pumps, all the things, the boiler itself, a bunch of stuff here, natural gas piping, water heater, plumbing fixtures. Where'd the boiler go? It's called the unit heaters, all of the, cutting, patching, oh, here we go, the two rack condensing boilers, about the size of a large refrigerator, there are two of them for redundancy, $30,000. But it's the demolition, we were looking at the hydraulic piping installation, so we're redoing the whole piping. A lot of the stuff was installed in 1952 when that was a highway garage. So there hasn't been much up there, but that is the heart of my operations up there.
But I'm just wondering on the difference in cost, it, so we got $100,000 for the new tank.
Correct.
And how much for the two boilers?
$30,000 for the, for the two gas condensing boilers.
No, I'm talking about, what about for two oil boilers?
I don't have that number. I, I, I don't know. I know that these gas condensing boilers are cheaper because they're just smaller, and we are going to hot water. So we are re, in reality, we're, we are redoing the whole system up there, returning it from steam, which is a, steam to a hydroponic, hy- hydroponic, that's growing, hot water system up there. So it's, it's the whole thing, the, we have the electrical work, there's some duct work, there's relocate the fire, fire alarm panel, we have a fairly detailed estimator. The natural gas piping, that needs to come from the road, so the billing is $3,000.
Is the steam working?
Absolutely.
So the steam service system works?
Correct.
So if we kept it working?
Correct.
I'm just looking at $400,000 for minimal saving on an annual basis, and I'm saying, how can we stay with what we got? And will that be a significant reduction in the cost?
If you just want to stay with hot water, excuse me, the, the oil, the heating oil, it's $100,000 to pop the tank out of the ground and put another one in, then we will not convert that building to natural gas until the boiler. Then I'll be here, maybe if I last that long, here. I've been here 35 years. I'll be coming to the town council, to a town council if I'm still here. My boiler has died, we have gas in the road, I have a new oil tank. What do we want to do? Throw away $100,000 worth of the new oil tank?
By that time, you've already told us the Hurricane III, category III is gonna blow us over anyway. We're gonna be rebuilding the whole building.
That building, no, that, that building will take it. The police station will fall.
Excuse me, one second, please. I just wanted to let people realize, we're at 10 right now. We have this account and we have three more accounts to get through. So as soon as we're done voting on this, then we're gonna have to vote again if we want to finish the last three, and people still want to talk. So Rita, I mean, Councilor Schmidt, I'm sorry.
I want to find out, it's my understanding that we need to connect one building-
Correct.
-to the gas-
Correct.
-line, or we have some kind of a penalty.
Correct.
So this is an opportunity at this time because it is something that needs to be done and would satisfy that, that obligation.
Absolutely.
So we are on 9A, and the amount is $400,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let me get it. So opposed is, can you raise your hand, please? So Zepary, Overy, is that it? Any abstentions? So seven in favor, two opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. So since it is 10 o'clock, we need to concur that we want to move on and finish the last three accounts. Do we have consensus to move on? Do we need to vote? Mr. Ross, Chair?
We should vote.
Okay. All those in favor of continuing to take the other accounts past 10 o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So we move to roll on. Okay, so voted, let me write it down, voted at 10 unanimously to continue. Okay, so we are on 10A, which is page 234. I'm in, Rita? I don't even know whose turn it is. Councilor Schmidt?
So I'm with a figure of $479,000 for Water Pollution Control Facility, 10A, for sewer line infrastructure repair.
Second. Seconded by Parker. And if you know, this is paid for, it has the O, so water pollution, the fees are paid for by user fees, I was trying to say.
That's correct. The next three projects will, and when the council did go through our, our account, which is 2030, those monies were approved that go into this account, these accounts here. But now that money gets transferred into the capital project and must be approved, expended from then. These, all these projects were reviewed and vetted by the Water Pollution Control Authority, and it meets their goal of maintaining a sound system with zero overflows, defects, fines. And so this is a planned replacement of those components. First one here is, is funds are several. We have our main line intercepted between the Boquonic River Pump Station, Boquonic River Pump Station, excuse me, the treatment plant. We need to evaluate it. It was installed in the late 80s, excuse me, early 80s it was installed. And what we do is we send a camera down. Usually what we see is some deterioration, just like our arteries that we see as we get older. And what we can do is we can line that pipe. There's sewer lining, we don't have to dig it up, we can do those types of repairs. So what we're looking for is to do that, and some of the other areas that we have, this is just to realign the sewer lines in those areas. Outlying in years is all the projects that are identified.
Seeing no questions, we will vote on 10A, $479,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 10B, Councilors Zepary.
This is 10B, Pump Stations, Water Pollution Control Authority. I move that we appropriate an amount of $200,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Morosik.
And what, what we have divided up was the collection system, which you voted on before. These are the actual pump stations. We have 21 pump stations throughout the area because we're not as flat as we should be, so we need to pump the sewage up so it will flow gravity, and the third one you'll see is the treatment plant. This here is just some of our planned replacements for the major components, electrical and mechanical components at the Gosscope Pump Station. That's the major pump station from the Navy, takes the Navy subbase and some of the surrounding businesses. That station is one of our critical stations that takes in all of the subbase proper itself, some of the housing areas, and again, some of the businesses that we have in that area.
Gary, just for curiosity, what's the size of your lines?
I think our largest line is, on top of my head, and hopefully people aren't, I think it's a 30-inch line, most of them are, are 12, 16.
The pressure lines?
Pressure lines, 30-inch. 26, 26 are 30-inch, that's, that's, and I know it's not 36, so it's 26.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will vote on $200,000 for CIP 10B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously.
I did have one question, can I just ask? Do we take, do you take care of the pumps in the city or just in the town?
Just the town. The city has their own maintenance, or has, has their own system. There's a small portion of the town that flows into the city, and a small portion of the city that flows into the town. So we do have that, that cooperation, the mutual, I call it aid, on sewage in those areas.
Councilor Morosik, CIP 10C on page 236, please.
10C, Treatment Facilities, I move $52,000.
Second. Moved by Morosik and seconded by Parker.
What this is, is to do the modernization or the plan for the modernization of our laboratory at the plant. Like with any, anything that worked with sewage, we have to do daily tests. That lab was built in the early 80s. We have the equipment down there that is that old. So what we're looking at is, looking at redoing portions of the lab. So we want to spend some money on getting a architect down there who does labs. So we're not looking for a house architect to help us out to what we need and what, what we need to have down there and then put a, a plan together for the Sewer Authority to vote on, to take a look at and vote on and place in their budget next year.
Seeing no questions, we will vote on CIP 10C, the amount of $52,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. I believe that is the end of tonight's agenda. So then we need a motion to recess.
You need a motion to recess?
Moved by Morosik.
Until Wednesday.
Until Wednesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM. Seconded by Heath. All those in favor of recessing until Wednesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We're adjourned.